Live streaming, I mean. Is ready to go? All right, great, thank you. Welcome, everyone, to our Inglewood City Council Study Session here on October 8th, and we have full council tonight. First up is the ACE report, and so I'd like to ask all the members of ACE who are going to present tonight to come on up and join us, or whoever was planning to be here. This is an Economic Development Manager, Darren Hollisworth, and members of the ACE or Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood are presenting an update to us on their activities. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We have been looking forward to this time with you all.
Yes, thanks for having us.
Chair Mannion, do you want to introduce everybody on your groups?
Yeah. I'll have everyone introduce themselves, so go ahead and start.
Pass the microphone around, please.
My name is Nathan Elag. I lead a church in town called the Sacred Grace.
Brad Nixon, Nixon's Coffee House and Share Good Foods.
Andrea Mannion, Mannion and Associates, accounting and tax business, and I have a little help with Baby Mannion in here, too.
Amy Gallegos with iLogic.
Judith Dunlop, JD Unlimited.
Right, we have a few other members not present tonight, but... All right, we'll start off. As you guys probably know, our purpose was for a business advisory group to you guys, and we link the business community, trying to improve communications and providing outreach to everyone. So, some exciting things we've been working on. At our meetings, we've been meeting with all the city departments. There's some examples there with public works, police, code enforcement, et cetera. We're just trying to learn everything we can to be valuable resources for businesses. You may have questions about anything. We've also met with a lot of our economic partners, the SBA, the Mecasa Resource Center, the SBA, the Inglewood Chamber of Commerce, and also Manufacturers Edge, actually, this year, so that was really fun. Visitors, we've had EarthTrex, the South Pearl Street Business Association, Change the Trend, and we also attended a Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting that they invited us to. And as you remember from last time, we've been working on business visitations. We've only done six this year, but they've been very valuable. A few outcomes, the city found out, we interviewed the blue chair and actually found out they were closing before the city knew about it, so Darren was able to kind of reach out and figure that, what the problems were there. And then, our visitation with the Son of Studios actually encouraged us to start a Small Business Saturday event, which I'll talk about later, but they suggested it, and it's been something we've been working on in the past few months. We also worked on, I don't know if you remember last time, but we're having problems kind of getting into the businesses because we didn't really have any validation, so we worked with Slate to create a folder for us. And we have a business card, a flyer to describe who our board is. We have the Inglewood Business Resource Guide included, a letter from the mayor, and then sometimes we put other materials, like the Chamber of Commerce events, in there. So when we meet with businesses, we'll give them this folder, so they have the resources and can contact us later. Also in there is example of a business thank you card we've been sending out to all of our very long business owners who have been here for like 20-plus years we started with. So we've been using these Inglewood postcards and handwriting thank you notes for being a business in the city of Inglewood. And there's also a flyer and the thank you card about who we are and how to contact us. So we've sent out 58 thank you cards to all of our longtime businesses here, and we actually found out Bee's Automotive was closing from that interaction because they actually ended up calling Community Development to tell them. So after they received the thank you card, they reached out to let us know that they're actually closing. And we also attended the Inglewood Business Resource Expo. It was Judy, I, and Jason. We sat at the booth here, and so we got a lot of great interaction with all the businesses coming in to learn about that, so, and we got to pass out information about the city and our board there as well. And then, the last few months, we've really been working on a Small Business Saturday initiative, so we passed and voted on a proclamation, which will be coming to you guys either next city council meeting or early November, to declare November 24th Small Business Saturday. And most of our outreach has been getting businesses to get involved, so right now we have about 25 businesses participating, and they're going to hold their own discounts or specials for that day. Anything else about it? And we have a sample timeline. We would like to do a kickoff event. Yeah, it's probably 10 o'clock now, but we've confirmed that EarthTrex is going to host our kickoff, and Brad is graciously, is going to provide drinks, coffee, and snacks, maybe, for the event. But we would like all of city council to be involved. We would like the mayor to be there to welcome everyone, maybe read the proclamation, say some words, and other council members. We have an SBA representative, Chamber President, and we're trying to get, we're working with our communications department and the SBDC to help us do press releases and get media attention down here. And then afterwards, everyone can just go around to all the participating businesses. So, that's kind of like our example timeline right now. So we ask, please let us know how we can get on your schedule or get that scheduled with you guys. Please let us know how to do that. I'll be there.
Thank you.
Yes. Our next goals, so one problem we've had this year is not really businesses knowing who we are, or getting a meeting, as we've scheduled interviews, but they actually end up canceling, because it's really hard, you know, for business owners. We're business owners and they're business owners, and things come up, so it's been hard to sit down when we schedule something sometimes. So, our next goals are to actually utilize our ACE meetings for that purpose. We're thinking about creating focus groups, maybe focusing like on a certain business area, like manufacturing, and inviting a few manufacturers to our meeting, and then that way we can do outreach or interviews there at our meeting. We also are suggesting a walking group, maybe during our meetings, where we go out to a specific Inglewood area and visit some businesses, just to pop in and say hello and introduce ourselves. And we'd also like council members to be engaged with that as well. So if we're in your district for a specific walking group, we can invite you to come with us to meet these business owners. So there's lots of more opportunities for you guys to also be engaged with us. And the last thing I want to talk about at our last meeting, we had Heather Driscoll back there come and explain all of the licensing and occupational privilege tax decisions going on, and so we took her. She took all of our questions, which is a lot. So we just wanted to give you our opinions of business owners on the board. So, as far as the general business licensing, most of us felt favorable. We were okay with being able, you know, if we were required, all of us to be licensed, even a service-based business like myself, we'd be okay with that as long as the fee was nominal. And there's also a generous amnesty period, so we're worried about, in order to get businesses to sign up, if they're going to, you know, go back to the past and be responsible for like four years past that they haven't filed use tax, say, then I don't think they're going to be very motivated to get that license. So, if the fee's nominal, if it's ease, you know, user-friendly for the application and to file online, and there's an amnesty period, I think we thought it was pretty favorable. Also, we talked about having a dollar threshold, perhaps, about filing use tax. Heather reassured us that, you know, the point isn't about going out to the little residential businesses and trying to get everyone to get their use tax. So, if there was like a dollar sales threshold, so that the really small home businesses wouldn't be affected, then, you know, I think that would be more favorable as well. As far the occupational privilege tax, we had a little more reservation with. We felt it was, it would hurt small business, and it wouldn't be very business-friendly. With the bigger businesses, I think they're used to having an occupational privilege tax with other cities that they're in, but we were worried about the smaller people. So, you know, a few of our members, like Amy and Brad here, have, you know, a few employees, and they feel that, you know, they would rather have that money, obviously, for their business rather than having to file occupational privilege tax. So we also thought maybe there could be an employee threshold, like a number, like maybe six-plus employees, then you would be responsible for occupational privilege tax. Or you'd have to come up with like some, what would be the benefit out of it? Like, would this include maybe graffiti removal, or more police presence, or a fire department? Again, something to show what this privilege tax is going towards, and not just looking like the city needs money and so they're coming after us to fill that gap. We, you know, you'd have to spice it up a little and say, what are you going to get out of it, kind of thing. We said that, so... I think that was our opinions on the matter. Our next meeting, we're going to talk about how we can do some, if you guys would want us to, to get some more business feedback in the community. We talked about partnering up with Chamber to maybe do outreach to see what other businesses would think about the occupational privilege tax and the licensing, so...
Great. Does anyone have anything else to add?
Thank you. It's all really helpful. We have a few questions. May I approach them also?
Has the ACE Committee given up on the idea of sponsoring a Business of the Year or doing something like that? I know that at one point you all were talking about perhaps a plaque or something like that.
Yeah, we would like to do a recognition program. We're trying to recognize businesses for their years of business. We came up with like a first year and then every other five years, kind of just recognizing how long they've been here with like a little plaque or a little badge that just says Inglewood Business for one year, Inglewood Business for five years, or 10 years, you know, kind of thing.
We're just still trying to work that out in such a way that we can do that. We've run into some problems or concerns that we're still trying to overcome. And so, some of that now, we're trying to learn a little bit more about who's been here the longest. Those postcards are giving us some information and trying to reach out on that level, but that is certainly something that we'd still like to do, just would like to figure out a way to make that happen that satisfies what everybody's trying to accomplish with it.
For clarification, could you just give an example of some of the concerns?
One of the challenges we ran into is that...
Needs a mine.
Sorry. One of the challenges we ran into is that it could appear as though the city's endorsing a particular business, if they receive a badge or something like that, and that is something we didn't feel like we had permission necessarily to extend to a business. So if they were to be given some sort of a plaque or something, and it had the Inglewood logo on it, or even just something about the city of Inglewood, that could appear to be an endorsement, which we had a hard time figuring how to do that in an equitable way across the board.
Thank you. Were you finished?
Well, I just had one more question along that lines. Is that something that city council could give them permission to do, to use the logo to put on a plaque? Since ACE is an extension, and I mean, that may be something that we could talk about at a different time, but would there be any legal...
The city attorney, are you asking a legal question, too? Yeah.
I have the legal question also.
There may potentially be legal issues with that. I would, Darren has come to me about some of those options in the past, and I've been concerned, so if that's something that council is interested in doing, I can put some, I can put a memo together so that you can weigh your decisions in that, but I do think that there's potential legal issues.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, everybody, and thank you for all the important work that you're doing. With the business visitations in 2018, was there any overarching themes or trends that you saw or heard that you'd like to share?
I think everyone's busier. I had a much harder time getting people to meet with me this year than I had the previous year. Maybe everyone's just, business is growing.
Anything else? Glaring feedback we should know about? Good or bad? I know it's hard with only six, I mean, you know, to see any trends or anything, but just curious if there was any other feedback.
The response always seemed to be good when we did show up. A lot of people, and I've only actually been on one, but they weren't aware of who we were. And it was a kind of outreach that they appreciated knowing, and then establishing a relationship so that they could actually call up, ask questions, get resources, know where to go for information.
Great. And great job on that folder. I think that really gives you guys some more credibility and gives, leave behind so people can find you later, so great job on that.
Councilmember Berentine.
I hope that Judith is very careful of what she does, because you have our logo on your body, and I hope that nobody thinks that that's just an endorsement of the city for you, so you behave when you're wearing that thing.
I wear it to our meetings.
I think that the, I think some of the concerns about the logo issue are a little, are a little humorous. I mean, we put the, if we do a business license, our logo is on it. We're endorsing that business, that they have a business license or a tax license, or that they do business. I think that, and then, as long as it's equitable and across the board for every business that's fortunate enough in what can be difficult climates, is not an endorsement, but an acknowledgement that they've done business here for that period of time, so I think that gets a little serious. Although I do agree, like, you know, there are troubles sometimes, like Sullivan putting a name on a building, I mean, you know, those kind of things. I mean, those things happen, so I understand why those kind of concerns can come up, but I don't think it's an endorsement of the building or the business as much as it is an acknowledgement of what they've done, no different than a tax license or business license. And people have a habit of framing them and putting them on the wall, because that shows that they're in compliance with what's going on. But I think that that's an amazing idea, to have that acknowledgement that they've been there. It also would give a timely, in my opinion, a timely conversation to businesses at those integral periods of growth. I mean, what a business goes through in its first year to survive and accomplish, and when it goes through in that fifth year are different in what they would have experienced, the information that they could provide. And if there was that regular conversation going on at those integral, very important periods of their business's growth and existence in the city, I think that that would be very important. You said that there was a Chamber recognition? What was that? I mean, because we recognize the Chamber. The Chamber is not the only business in the Chamber business in this community. We have several other organization, business organizations, and several other chambers. But that's not necessarily that we're a member of that Chamber or South Metro Chamber is not necessarily an endorsement of them or the businesses that they represent, because they are limited in the businesses that they represent. They charge the businesses in order to become part of that organization, and so just by the fact that we're part of that organization isn't necessarily that we're only for the businesses that the Chamber recognizes. I mean, we don't, we don't want to put ourselves in that position either, or that we're only for the businesses that pony up the money to become part of the South Metro Chamber. So I think it's actually a much more equitable way for the city to acknowledge the contribution and work that's being done, and try to get away from that we're only supporting businesses that are with the Chamber, because that's the events that we end up going to and getting invited to, and so this might actually do a little additional outreach that I think is probably pretty needed. So I hope that this, I hope the council continues to look at this and do that, because I'm not agreeing with the concerns that are being brought up here, certainly for the city's point. And then, what were, I know that you said that there were six businesses on there. I mean, I asked for just like the audit piece of it, and we did like 79 or 80 audits in the last two years, and eight businesses left the city or went out of business, and, you know, that's 10%. That's still 10%, that's still, I think you start to get a feel for what's going on. What's your plan for doing that in the future? How do you see that playing out, to continue to do that outreach in the future? Do you think it's going to be more, or did you think it was valuable enough to continue to do it?
Yeah, we're definitely going to continue it. We just, we're going to change it by being more efficient, by using our meetings, and then inviting multiple business owners at our meetings, so we can talk to more people at once to kind of get a feeling, so... But we still plan on outreach, for sure, and doing our interviews, and see if we can reach more businesses by doing it that way, by getting more people in one room at the same time with similar thoughts, similar geographic areas, not thoughts, excuse me, but similar businesses, and see if that way we can be more effective, more efficient, and maybe a little more collaborative with it.
Is there anything in the way you're doing it currently, right now, that you would want to change? I mean, do you think the questions are, do you think the process so far has worked well for the ones you've done?
I do. It's just being able to get everyone to meet. I mean, I think I had one business council on me seven times over the last, over a two month span, and so you're trying to meet them all the time. That takes the time away from meeting with someone else. I think it's just the logistical part of meeting.
And I only have one more question. I have a little bit of a concern. Job that you guys are supposed to do in being appointed by council to go ahead and reach out to businesses, and I understand that there would be some melding with the chambers, both South Metro and the Greater Inglewood Chamber as well, but you are a separate entity with a different kind of mission statement as well. And I went back and did some of the meetings, and it, I don't think that you guys are put together just to come up for ideas for the Chamber, either South Metro or them. I mean, the catalyst of what you're doing, I would like to remain somewhat separate so that we have a way for businesses to interact and communicate with the city, separate from having either one of any of the other entities that they would be doing. So, if we could get a little bit more conversation going on exactly how that is, not that you shouldn't partner or reach out occasionally, but you are not one in the same, and I got a little confused at a couple of the meetings that whether we have that separation or not, because I think that needs to remain there. I know when, I know when Randy Penn took over the Chamber, when he was leaving, you know, and he knew he would be going to, from being mayor of the city to chairing that, or being the CFO, what his position is, that his intent at the time, at least what he stated on the record, was that he would like to separate the Chamber from its dependence on the city, as it was. I'm not sure that that's really happened, but we need to make sure that they are different, that different entity. How are you guys feeling about that separation from those?
If I may respond to that? I can't recall, actually, the last time that Randy came to one of our meetings. So, he is, he is, he does come occasionally as part of the Chamber representative in what we're doing, but I'm not exactly certain where your confusion's coming from, because we don't in any way think that we're an extension to the Inglewood Chamber.
I could clear that up to answer that question, is that in a couple, I'm not sure if it was how many meetings ago, because they all meld into my head together, so I can't get to the date, but it's been recent, where the comment from staff then was that maybe that would be something better suited for the Chamber to do. And so that's where my confusion comes in.
Sure. So let me respond to that.
Sure, thanks.
And I don't know exactly what instance you're referring to, but I will give you an instance where something similar came up like that. And it was in regard to recognizing a business on an annual basis during the Chamber's holiday, or not really the holiday, their annual recognition of businesses, and it was a way for us to piggyback on that, where it actually is the Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood's Business of the Year Award. So that was the only association. It became a platform or a mechanism for actually being able to recognize that business. Of course, the logo and how that actually happens through the city, that is, in a proper legal fashion, has something to do with that, but I'm sure that that's something we can work through, whether that is agreeable or not. I think the important thing is for us to recognize the businesses that are in Inglewood, and to speak with the businesses that are in Inglewood. And I think we feel like that we're doing that on behest, on behalf of council, and trying to do that for the city of Inglewood versus the Chamber of Commerce. They do it in a different fashion, but they still do represent businesses.
Thank you.
So do you see it more, that it's more like the, like when businesses are having problems with ordinances or zoning or things like that, that that would be more of it? Or do you really see it more as partnering, maybe with some of the Chamber-type mission?
I'm not sure I exactly understand the question.
Like, I guess there seems to be a need in the community, for the business community to have a voice more like on some of the policy and issues that they might be dealing with, whether that's graffiti, and that somebody could do graffiti, and then that business becomes the violator in 24 hours, or whether it's trash, or whether it's the homeless issue and how the police are dealing with any kind of, you know, or how the police are dealing with issues. Whereas, I see the Chamber more as a separate organization that does events and business-building things for their businesses, and I'm just trying to find out which way you guys think that you're more centered in.
Here again, I think we're working on behalf of what you all have chartered us to do in the city of Inglewood. So, if somebody has an issue, a business-related issue, and they know of us, we would certainly, you know, welcome their comments and them attending one of our public meetings that we have once a month. So that, that works out very well, I think, on behalf of the city, so I hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
That's a start, thank you.
I just have a couple more who want...
I just wanted to say that I think that we view ourselves as a resource, and that might be the difference between us versus the Chamber and the things that you said that they're responsible for. Do you agree with that?
Potential resource of the city, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe what we should do is resend out your very specific mission that you have under our, under the city, and just for us to all look at it again, because if there's some confusion there, we sure don't want to impede what you're doing, which I think is really wonderful. So, Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. Thanks for the great presentation. Good to see you all again. So, I have just a small handful of questions. One, if the meetings, the visitations are sometimes tricky, have you all spent... One, if the meetings, the, the visitations are sometimes tricky, have you all spent time thinking through other vehicles and other methods of sharing, information sharing that isn't necessarily going there and handing them that folder in hand just so that the communication can still happen even if maybe it's, it's difficult to carve out even a few minutes during a weekday?
I think those walking tours will be key that we're considering doing.
And what, other than that, if?
Well, I think we can get a lot from that, just going out and figuring and getting your face in front of their face and knowing that the resource exists. I mean, even if we can just stop in and, and say, here is this, that most of them don't know that we're around still at this point.
There might be another piece as well. Couldn't we partner with Darren a little bit more heavily on community development when each entity, to advertise ACE from that point, from that standpoint? Seems like a necessary venue for business owners, correct? To meet with that office, Darren's on ACE. We could maybe start the conversation or even provide a little information at that point too. We don't want to overload Mr. Hollingsworth, but it seems like it's extremely valuable when you make that point of contact. I just, well, I look forward to seeing how the walkabouts go. Certainly, it's a good idea. So regarding the two closings, you mentioned the two that you found out about. Two isn't a large enough number to notice trends, of course, but do you see any similarities between the two that are resonating with you, that you're taking note of, making a point of addressing maybe later if you continue to see, you know, those types of reasonings coming forth, why ACE or didn't know, why the city didn't know they were closing?
Well, one of them, we know is just a financial reason.
Do you mind speaking just a little louder?
Oh, sure. One of the businesses I know it was a financial reason and kind of like they're having landlord issues as well because they didn't own the building. So there is some rental dynamics and financial dynamics going on with that one. Darren, I'm not sure about B's Automotive, what they told you?
I, I actually think we should not be discussing directly any specific businesses. So let's be really careful here.
Without breaching any confidence, it seems like there, there were.
Just trends.
Trends, some real estate indicators in both of them with our changing and dynamic real estate market we're facing in the metro area here. They're both a product of that, of that change in market.
Great, thank you.
I think Mr. Hollingsworth probably could give us more trends over a number of other businesses that maybe you didn't have the, you know, have the opportunity to meet with if we wanted to get that further.
Right. All of our materials have the community development phone number on, so we don't get contacted directly about some of the feedback.
Sure.
If, if I may, I think some of this work is cumulative. So I think it, it helps when people learn that we're, we're around and that we're making these trips, these visitations, these walk, walkabouts. Sounds kind of odd, but, and, and the different things that we're trying to do. I think it does have a cumulative effect where they build. And I think we really just began in the last year trying to do more of these. So our process will certainly get refined over time.
Sure. Thank you. And one final question, I'll be quick about it.
Yes, we need to.
If we do move forward with awarding a Business of the Year, I just encourage you to think about the metrics and think about how impartial we can be in giving out those awards and being fair and just across the community. That's it. Thank you for your work and thanks for the great presentation again.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. Getting to all you and thank you for the work you do, I'd like everybody here. It really is, I'm sure, a fair amount of your time. You mentioned seven appointments with one particular business and I know none went through, but even tracking folks down like that, I know is, can be labor intensive. So kudos to you guys for doing it. I thought the folder was a really nice touch too, and I think the card is, is just a, it's kind of a class act from you guys, so I appreciate you guys putting that together. With the Small Business Saturday, I'm seeing the tentative timeline here, but at date has not even been estimated at this point, if I understood correctly, that has not been determined?
It's November 24th.
Thank you.
So it's the Small Business Saturday, which is the day after Thanksgiving.
If you just said that and I missed it, then pardon me, but I have written it down now. I appreciate it. You were mentioning the business licensing and you brought up the dollar threshold. In your guys' discussion, did you see that being placed a dollar threshold on the income of the business or on the tax burden of the business? Or had that not even come up in the conversation?
I think we talked about the sales figure. At first, we thought about maybe excluding residential businesses altogether.
Sure.
But then the idea came up, well, maybe someone is making a million dollars at home off a website or something. And so then we switched to kind of a sales dollar threshold rather than commercial versus residential zoning.
Very good. You know, we have a lot of ideas here on businesses and how we best treat our businesses in the city. And so hearing kind of firsthand your guys' thoughts on some of the things that we kick around here is very valuable. I appreciate it. I know that we're trying to get through it, but I am curious because we don't have folks that are so directly involved with business in front of us all that often. Do you guys have any general thoughts on the front of your mind or things that you're hearing on the, the climate in Inglewood for a business, just the landscape? And do people want to be here? Do people not want to be here?
Councilmember Questa, I didn't hear most of what you said, maybe because of your hands, but maybe speak just a little bit louder?
Excuse me, you bet. Absolutely. You know, again, I appreciate when we have firsthand business owners right in front of us. And what are your thoughts, if you have any, on the front of your mind, just on the general business climate right now in Inglewood? And I don't mean to put anybody on the spot if there are no answers. And critiques are welcome. Matter of fact, appreciated if there happen to be any.
Well, I will, I will tell you, because we've been around for a number of years, that I've always really appreciated the city of Inglewood as a place to operate a business. And it has a very small-town feel in the city, city environment. Accessibility of, you know, people within the city as far as you folks and other, other administrators within, within the city of Inglewood, I think is one of the things that you guys do well. It might be in part our proximity to the city that we get to see a lot of you and have many interactions with you. I'm encouraged by the things that have happened in the past to be able to create a very dynamic city that is, I'm trying to push forward in creating kind of this next chapter of things that were going on. And, you know, I, I guess I could probably think, you know, about some specifics if, you know, given some time, but I always recommend people come to the city of Inglewood to try their business, whatever, you know, business that that might be, because I think it's a great spot. Crossroads are, are great. There's all the things that we all think about as far as accessibility, transportation and things, I think are good positive points for, for the city. And, and I think we as part of this Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood get that opportunity to hear, but also then say, you know, what our experiences have been with the city in those meetings that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the work.
Did you, did you get everything?
No.
Because I'm fine with taking, some people got a lot more time than, than you did. So if you have another question, go ahead.
I'm excited, thank you. And thanks again. Appreciate it.
I have one question. And when is, when are the walkabout, walking tours? Is that, you're, you're meeting still on, is it Wednesday?
The first Wednesday of the month.
Of every month?
Yeah, at 11:30.
Eleven? Eleven thirty. So if someone on the council wanted to join you, how would they go about doing that? Because you're inviting us to do that, right?
Right.
Or do you want to let us know when one is coming up and we'll just make sure everybody on council gets it?
Yeah, once we have something scheduled in a particular area, we'll definitely reach out to the mayor or that council member of that area and let them know we have that scheduled if they want it.
Yeah, I would encourage you to send it, if you send it to me or to Dorothy, we'll get it out to everybody because some people might be out of town one week and we've got several that travel. So let's see if we can get at least one council member there on each time you try and do one.
Okay, great.
I think it's a great idea, so, and I love the packet. Thank you so much for taking the time to come tonight and also for giving us feedback, especially on a couple of items that we asked for some help on. And we'll continue to do that with other groups too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our additional 2019 budget information session. Acting Deputy City Manager Dorothy Hargrove is here to present to discuss additional 2019 budget information that we've asked about. And she did a great outline of coming up with what we suggested at the regular meeting last week. And let me just ask everyone to, let's make sure that we use this as a time to get questions answered, not telling everybody something, okay? So that'll be time in the regular meeting if you're going to be explaining something, but let's really get at the questions and answers during this time.
Thank you.
If I could add a little more, I'm not, I don't, I'm not. Well, we spent a lot of time last, just now with ACE, which I think is fine for some of us to give them some of our information of what we're thinking about, but it went on a little bit long, particularly in, in your time slot was, I should have probably cut you off. It was like almost thirteen minutes. And I am going to start timing this so that we all get the same amount of time. And then if people need to circle back, we could do that. So that's what I mean. Let's ask questions and get answers and try not to spend too much time sort of rehearsing things that you think about it yet, but more getting information that you need.
Does that mean? I still don't understand because I, was there somebody that wasn't able to ask the previous presenters anything because of the questions that I asked?
No, but we went twenty minutes over because of it. So I would like to keep us on time and that's all this is about, is making sure that everyone gets their questions answered fully. And I don't want anyone to feel like, oh, we're, we were twenty minutes over, let's cut back. So let's make sure we get the questions asked first and then, and then if there's discussion time you want to have around it before we end and do the regular meeting next week, I think that's fine, but I want to make sure everyone gets all the questions out.
I was confused by the wording like rehearsed and, and giving information rather than asking. So thanks for the attempted clarification.
Thank you. Good question. All right. Acting Deputy City Manager Hargrove.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have asked Finance Director Maria Sabata to join me up here since many of these questions are finance-related and she is instructed to kick me under the table if I say something that's incorrect. The, all we have on a PowerPoint is just the guide to the discussion. These are the topics that we heard last time we got together that you wanted answered about the budget. So we thought we'd take them one by one. The details of our responses and the information are in your packet. I will start with the additional stormwater technician that Mr. Questa in particular asked about and had been discussed previously. We feel that the position estimated to cost about seventy-one thousand a year would be covered by the fee increase in the stormwater drainage fee. Those funds, those fees are estimated to generate about three hundred and fifty thousand in 2019. And even with the additional costs incurred because of the storm we had in July, it will not deplete the fund balance of the stormwater fund. So we can certainly add that as one of the expected employees should city council instruct us to do so. I will say, in addition, the stormwater drainage fee and the sewer fund fees will be studied at greater length and do a detailed cost study so that the permanent fees will be made clear in future study sessions. It's not included in this budget except for the interim fees that we had suggested. I think it would be helpful to ask for questions after each point.
Mayor Pro Tim Russell?
So the rate, there's two things here. The rate increase on the, on the sewer fees, is that not going into effect either in the budget?
It is, but it doesn't affect this particular position because this position would be paid out of the storm drainage fee.
Okay. So, so I'm going to ask questions about the storm drainage fee first of all and about the budget sheet that we got because the numbers changed drastically on this sheet from what they were in the budget itself. And I actually would like for you to explain why that happened. Because it.
Could you tell us where the pages are so we can?
Okay. So it's Attachment A in the, in the packet and then it is page 313 in the booklet. Budget book.
Which page in the budget book?
Three thirteen.
Three thirteen.
I mean, the operating costs jumped significantly. The revenue did not change.
So it's my understanding in talking with Jenny, our budget manager, that when the direction was given by council to add the revenue, we did not include the cost of the assessment and then also the three hundred and fifty thousand total that you also wanted to add. So this page reflects that now.
Okay, so, and one other thing I saw here was that in Part A, per council's previous direction, stormwater drainage fees will be increased in 2019 by three dollars for residential properties, but also business cost will go from twenty dollars per acre per month to forty dollars per acre per month. Is that included in the revenue?
It's my understanding that yes, it is.
Okay. So was the, was the three dollar increase in there or?
The revenue was included. It was the expense side that was not, the use of funds that was not.
So this is an updated sheet that's in the packet, which will be in the budget.
Okay, so the use of funds, and on this, this increase, and I think this may become problematic and maybe part of the reason that didn't happen, do we already know what the use of funds was going to be? Because council wanted that fee to be increased so that when the study came back, that we would have money to begin to put towards what was going on, but it looks to me like it's already being spent for, and you can tell me what for.
My understanding is that that increase was meant to cover the immediate expense of the study and perhaps a technician position when it was first presented. A longer-term fee increase, which would pay for infrastructure or improvements, would be suggested after a more detailed cost study, that this was not intended to generate enough money to address those needs.
Okay. That wasn't my understanding when we discussed it, but I, I could, may not remember it totally correctly, although I've been going back to, to watch the meetings again. So, so the, the expense part of it that we've added in now on the new page includes the seventy-one thousand dollars in the expenses. Does it include the hundred and seventy-one thousand for the study? Is that in 2018 or is that in 2019?
So, is my understanding correct? Maybe I'm wrong. That the hundred, the expense for the assessment will occur in 2018, but the fund will be replenished in 2019 when the fees are actually raised.
Okay, so there's money in there right now. We could pay for it with money we have, but.
We could, and it lowers the ending fund balance. That's correct.
Okay, it would lower the ending fund balance for this year.
Correct.
But, so we're, but we're going to lower the ending fund balance for next year.
Actually, it'll be about the same.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I see that. All right, so the seventy-one thousand, the hundred and seventy-one thousand also in the 2018, is the Oxford Station, is that included in the 2018 budget?
Yes, yes. The sinkhole is. And there's a plan for the resolution to come forward. I think that's what.
On the fifteenth?
On the fifteenth, yes.
The, the study is, will be partially paid in 2018 and the rest of it will be paid in two nineteen, in 2019. So it's split between two years.
Okay, and so the budget is split. So that, that accounts for all, so that money was not in here before either, the Oxford Station?
No.
Okay. So that's why the, but, okay, so it's not all there. The reason I couldn't figure it out, because I added all those numbers up, it's split between two years, 2018 and 2019. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions on this item? Everybody got what they needed to satisfy your understanding this one?
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it a consensus for us to include the stormwater technician in the, in the budget? I mean, it was a suggestion from council, but I wanted to make sure that we were moving in the right direction.
Let's go around. Councilmember Sierra, you feel good about it at this point?
If we feel it's going to bring value and allow us to. If we feel it's going to bring value and allow us to help with the issues that we have with the stormwater, while we work through the issues, or while we work, wait on the study, and then identify what the long-term plan is for the sewer drainage, I am for it, so it won't stop me from moving forward with the budget.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
No, I don't believe we should put the technician in at this time until we have some more information. I think it was a wise decision to leave it out in the first place.
Mayor Porton?
I agree with Councilmember Berentine, I believe that we should wait for the results of the study to see if we need to add another technician. The study may tell us that we just need to reallocate resources we already have, so my feeling is to wait on that.
Thank you, Marvino.
I think we should go ahead with it, I think by the time the study's over and we, it takes just far too long for, for things to happen, and there's already an urgency built up around this, and so let's get it in the motion such that we're ready to move and can move a little bit in lockstep with the study, even as the study ends, and, and be on top of things, instead of moving retroactively, I think.
Councilmember Questa?
Yes, I would support it. When Mr. Brennan spoke on August twenty-seventh, he said there were eight weekly hours being dedicated to cleaning those pipes, which is insufficient to keep them clean. Between now and our solution, I think those pipes functioning at an optimal level is one of our best defenses against mitigating further flood damage. One thing I would consider, and I've never had this conversation thus before, would potentially putting a one-year limit on the position, or making it a renewable position, so if we do determine two years from now we've got it solved, we no longer need that position, we can not renew it, but I would certainly support it for the two thousand nineteen budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
I was gonna, I'm fine adding it in right now, while we wait for the results of the study, but fully knowing that we're going to have to reevaluate when we have the actual study information in front of us, kind of what you were alluding to, that it's not a full-time forever position, but maybe once we have the study finalized, we're going to have more information, and maybe those budget dollars are better spent in infrastructure or something else, so I'm comfortable adding it in now, knowing that we're going to have to reevaluate.
I, I'm for putting it in. Hearing this idea from Member Questa makes me wonder about what is the attrition rate in this area? Is there a likelihood that, you know, we're constantly replacing people in this area? So, if we decided we didn't need it any year, I mean, everybody's at will, so can always decide the position isn't needed any longer.
Well, I think it, it adds a wrinkle to the recruiting process. I won't pretend otherwise, but if it's the will of Council, I'm sure we could figure out a way to perhaps come up with a contract employee and make it, make it clear to that person that it's not a permanent position. I think that would be the fair way to approach it.
I'm a little bit in-between in this one, because I do, I don't want to ever hire somebody for a one-year thing who's not maybe technically up for it, you don't get your best candidates that way, and having this come in at the last minute made me a little bit nervous as well, but I, I know that there's a huge push from people to have more resources put into this, I just want to make sure that this is the right resources, right, right resource we're putting in.
Councilmember Berentine?
If, if Council wishes to go through with funding this position, is there not a way to work it to have current people assigned more time to do that position than, that we currently have, since that's the way the job is currently done, is the allocation of time? And since this Council has not explored, whether that is sufficient amount of time or not, and whether it's just not used effectively, or whether it could be used more effectively, or whether we already have people in positions that we could just move the allocation of the time that they're currently spending, and just have them allocate more time, depending on what that would take away from any other job that they're doing, hasn't been explored, could we at least make sure that we explore that? Because I find it might be a challenge if they put some kind of limit on the position, who's going to want to go ahead and leave and do anything? So, we might be, it might be incumbent on us to take some internal moving around as, as it is, but we haven't even explored whether we could allocate more time, or how much that time they're allocating, how, how much time is really necessary to be efficient to go ahead and accomplish the end goal, because we really haven't defined the end goal yet.
Let's let the two of them respond to that. Do you feel confident about this position being used well, or others doing it?
If I could suggest, I mean, the money to pay for this position would come from the Storm Drainage Fund, which has sufficient funds to cover it. If Council would feel better with a detailed discussion from Utilities and Public Works about how we could achieve the goal of allocating more time, we could hire at a later date, but still there is money approved if the decision is made to go forward. So, in other words, I don't know that we have to make that decision tonight, I just wanted the decision to, you know, to be clear from Council, whether you wanted us to move forward quickly with that, or to provide more study. I won't speak for the Utilities and Public Works Department, but I think certainly they could, they could investigate other options.
Councilmember Questa, I saw yours go up for a minute, did you want to ask something around this?
You know, I, I thought that Mr. Brennan provided some further clarification on that as well. It might be good for all of us to regroup on that information, though, and to, for him to provide his best thoughts on, how many hours a week do we need for pipe cleaning? I thought that as he described it, currently he's dedicated more time to it, but then it's pulling folks away from other duties, and so what gets neglected if our folks are, if just the two folks that he has now dedicated to it are focused on pipe cleaning, as opposed to other tasks they could be doing? But I certainly recognize the need for just a better understanding of what are the tasks and how many hours are required.
That's helpful. Mayor Porton?
I do think that we could just not put it in the budget, but we would have the money, and then we could do the study and see if there's an allocation. Then if we need to go ahead and move forward with hiring somebody, we know there's money there.
I would prefer to do what you suggested, to wait a bit in hiring, and if that's what we want. I really do not, Council, want us to get in the weeds of them deciding where the, a staff person's time goes. I think you have to tell us, is this needed, will it be well-used, will it actually handle and address the issues that we're all so concerned about? And if not, we have to trust that you're, I, I really don't want us to get into the, I think this is bad practice for us to get into the weeds on this. So, I would prefer to put it in, and then let you decide, do you want to wait a little bit to hire, but we, we better be clear about that, that we're letting them do that, because I don't want anybody coming back January one and saying, you didn't hire that person either, so are we okay with that? We've got consensus to go ahead and put it in the budget, I, I believe, at least. Are those of you that are interested in that willing to let them have a little leeway time on, or do you want to hire, right, you want them to go forward?
Councilmember Questa?
That sounds certainly acceptable. One other point on that, even, again, with the more information, I would be curious how that looks seasonally. Needless to say, in the spring, summer, you've got liquid water, whereas in the winter, you've got frozen water, and what is the level? Do they still do those pipe cleanings in the winter, and if they do, at what rate are those done? Just again, from my own education, that would be helpful.
That's a good question, thank you. I think that's clear direction from us, and I appreciate the discussion. All right, okay, now we'll move on to everyone's favorite topic, and talk about EEF and EMRF and its impact on the fiscal year nineteen budget. We included in your packet the current lease for this building from EEF. You have, the articles of incorporation have been made available on our website. I will repeat that the information in your packet was, that was given to you a couple of weeks ago, these numbers are still the same, Attachment B1. The CAM, Common Area Maintenance Charge is about three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, and we, two city employees, about less than half time, less than half a full-time equivalent, support EEF, and we have a point-one-three-eight FTE supporting EMRF. The, our understanding from the lease is that as a triple-net lease, it means that we are by definition the tenant, and we agree to pay all taxes, insurance, and all maintenance expenses, which includes common area maintenance and repair of the building. I, I'm not sure how much more information to give, except to say that I think we've scheduled a study session on November fifth to talk specifically about EEF and EMRF, the structure, what we might want to do going forward. So, the budget reflects our best understanding of our fiscal obligations under the current contract. If Council wants to change that contract at a later date, it's certainly within your purview, but this would allow us to, to move forward until and unless something changes. Questions and comments?
Councilmember Berentine?
The information that was requested to go ahead and verify the three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand dollars that's common area maintenance charges, do we have the contract between EEF, the Inglewood Environmental Foundation, and the City of Inglewood for, that would justify either the formula or the cost for that three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand dollars?
The specifics of the three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand? No.
Okay. The, while I appreciate your providing the Articles of Incorporation, the Articles of Incorporation are the agreement between EEF and the City of Inglewood that we will take care and maintain this building. Common area maintenance charges by definition are common area maintenance charges, and I assume other tenants pay those charges as well. That's where we get the word common. So, I cannot find anywhere where we have agreed to pay the common area maintenance charges, what the formula for paying the common area maintenance charges are, what, or by contract, contractual agreement, what our area maintenance charges are. And when I went and got the additional information from Jenny Nolan, what I was told was the three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand dollars is actually put into the Public Works budget. The second question was, if that is the case, and we have personnel that we pay to run EEF, where is EEF paying us back for those charges to run their corporation? And if our Public Works Department in any way is performing the services for the common area maintenance, where is the money from EEF? The Inglewood Environmental Foundation, a subcorporation, where are they paying us back? Also could not find that revenue, and those were just the very specific questions that I asked. This lease agreement is specific only to the building and our obligation here, and did not answer the questions for the common area maintenance. I still need the information. Now, on the Public Works, if we could get that additional information too, because it's my understanding from going through the RAD tool, which does not align with this budget, there is not an, an actual alignment between the information provided there and this budget, but if I just take the information that was given, the three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand was put into Public Works, and that's of some concern to me.
Do either of you have a response to that, of any sort of information of?
I don't have copies of the, the payments. If Finance has them, that would be the, the place to go.
I think part of the November fifth study should include that.
Right, because I honestly don't know.
Unfortunately, that'll be past the time that I'm voting on that, and this is a significant amount of money.
But, but my, my, it is, there's no question of that, but we have paid common area maintenance for the last eighteen years of about this amount. I think we can find the agreement, I apologize that we don't have it, or a determination about how to get it. My, my suggestion to you, because I don't have an answer, is that if we put this amount in the budget, and then change that amount, or determine that it needs to be changed, then there will be a savings in the budget. If we don't put it in the budget, and then we find that we have a legal obligation to pay this or some similar amount upon further investigation, which is required, then we would have to do a supplemental appropriation. So, that is kind of a conundrum that I see.
So, you're still looking for any kind of, because the lease, I just want an understanding that the lease and the documents that we were provided in no way explain the three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand dollars?
Not, not in the detail, I agree.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that, thank you, and I appreciate the work that you did to, to put this together. So, are we still attempting to try and find out if there is a contractual agreement?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and would we be able to, would we be able to, before we are voting on this budget, to at least get some clarification on money that this city receives from EEF to reimburse them for the accounting services that we do, and for any of the common area maintenance that our city might perform for them?
We are doing our best to find the information.
I appreciate that, that's.
Other questions? Mayor Porton?
One of my questions along this lines, and I didn't see this, was because of the roof. Replacing the roof is that common area maintenance and maintaining this building and the interior of the building, when I, when we were in the rental market and we were renting from someone, we did have to pay to maintain the place that we were living, but if the roof was leaking, the owner paid for that. And so, common area maintenance is different, I think, than putting a new roof on the building, and I think that it's probably EEF's responsibility to put a new roof on the building.
I think that's an interpretation of the contract. As I said, a triple-net me, lease says that we are in charge of maintenance expenses for this building, we're required to maintain, preserve, and keep the actual leased property in good repair, working order, and condition. And, you know, most, a triple-net would mean that the tenant is usually responsible for all tenant improvement and finishes. I'm, I'm not a real estate expert, but that's the best interpretation that we've had. That's the language from, from the lease agreement.
Right, and so, I mean, I understand the maintenance, and when I was renting property to people too, I wanted them to take care of my property, but there were certain things that I was responsible to do, and so, I mean, maybe we're just not wise tenants in signing the lease, that, where we would have to pay for major expenses, that is a, that is a major capital expense. Thank you.
Another way to look at it is that we have a triple-net lease, you didn't in your rentals either, I never did either. Councilmember Berentine?
Well, I think that, and I appreciate it, they've already agreed, that the common area maintenance is not in this lease, that that's not, that's not what it's speaking about, they're, they're looking for that piece of it. It also refers to the subleases. The building here, from the information that I've gathered, we, we lease to Twenty-four Hour Fitness, and to the restaurant, and to the Guild. Is that the case? Do we have the whole building, or just this section of City Hall?
That is a question I can't answer.
Okay, if that is the case, could I please get the sublease agreements, and the amount, the formula for the common area maintenance that's charged? It seems to be quite a different formula from what little can be found, like for Chuck E. Cheese, for the different buildings here, we need to, generally, it's a formula, you have so much property, you know, in that way, because otherwise everybody else would be mad at you, because you're getting the same snowplow and they're getting, and if I only have five feet of sidewalk, and I'm paying a whole bunch more than you are, you know, by formula, so if I can either find the, get the agreements or the formula from, from that, that would be helpful as well, because it seems to be a little, almost as if we're connected with them, but I didn't find anything that connected us directly with those, or nor could I find the payments, so if that, if you could do that, any subleases that we have for the city as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine, are you finished? Others? Questions from others? Okay, ready to move on to C?
Okay. Staffing levels, we've had conversations about the census in the city, the number of people who work for us, and the number of FTEs. I did want to point out that that does get confusing, I mean, like, in, in my business, a lifeguard could work, you know, three hours a week and be a point-zero-two-five FTE, where Maria is a one full-time equivalent, plus a little, but we won't go into that. So, we decided that FTE was the best way to, to look at this, that that would be the most accurate measurement. So, in the two thousand eighteen budget, we had four-hundred-and-thirty-eight-point-six-six FTEs. Right now, we have four-point-three-eight, point-eight-three, point-one-seven percent increase, which had to do with, obviously, part-time people. The proposal- The proposed budget includes the additional positions that you've asked about. I will, if you'll allow me to be specific, because it was brought up in council before, about Maria Sabato's position. That is being paid out of the finance budget, having to do with a realignment with other, several other staff members who have changed positions or moved on from the city. So, that's not an additional FTE.
Thank you. Any question, ready for questions? Yes, councilmember requested.
So, the 438.83 for 2019?
No, excuse me, that's 2018.
Do we have an idea of what we'll have, where we'll be at in 2019? Would it be the same figure that we've been going through?
No, I mean, it includes the additional positions that you had. And I wasn't sure about the stormwater technician, so I didn't put that in quite yet. But it includes, 2019 will include those positions that you've agreed to fund, the fire inspector, and the code enforcement person, and the dispatcher.
So, three, storm technician?
And that would be four.
Four. So, it would be, call it 442.83? Very good. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, on to D.
There were questions raised about the risk management fund and the employee benefits fund in the original proposed budget. Those were combined into one fund. And after listening to council questions and concerns, we decided, on the advice of a finance department, to split them back in their original forms. So, we are proposing that we have a risk management fund and an employee benefits fund. You will see that the numbers in the packet are different from the, if you're trying to add apples and oranges from the proposed budget book, because the risk management office decided, if we were going to change that, that they would use the claims information from the end of September to make sure that the estimates were as accurate and up-to-date as possible. The others were dated from July. So, the numbers are slightly different. But I hope that this puts to rest the idea that there would be a lack of adequate funds to pay for employee benefits, or to manage our property liability risk.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Russell?
Thank you, Director Hargrove, for that explanation. I was, when I was comparing them, I thought, how do we have combined fund, and we have a negative number, and we separate them, and now we have positive numbers in both areas? And I, my husband said to me, he says, why don't you just go through and split up all the funds? You'll find a lot more money. So, but it's because that it was based on July numbers, and...
Earlier numbers, right. I've learned that insurance is a rapidly changing field.
Boy, is it ever.
Personally, and corporate.
And, Councilmember Berentine?
I appreciate the Mayor Protem's comments on this, but I am not in agreement with that splitting these funds, or just that the September numbers for, that wouldn't have even been, so you're still recording August. I mean, we went from a 7 percent deficit combining them, which was supposed to be an efficiency of administration costs. So, there was supposed, the reasoning that was gave, at least one of the many reasons that was given, but the most major one at the last council meeting, was that we were doing this to exact some efficiencies out of administratively combining them. So, I'm confused on how it could go, just for the course of two months of information, go from a 7 percent deficit of the combination to both of them being flush.
I'm not sure flush, but at least it wasn't negative.
Well, they're positive numbers now. They're not, they're not 7 percent negative, either one of them, both of them.
Could I address both of your questions in turn? The first, the, any administrative efficiencies would not have shown up in this. That would have to do with how the risk management office works. So, that was not included in any estimates. The other issue is that this is based on estimates going through to the end of the year, so it's not just the two months. It would be the whole for quarter and going into 2019. So, that the estimates of what our claims will be is much more positive than it had been, based on the trends here. I cannot pretend to be a risk management expert, but it's not just that this happened in these two months, but that the trends have changed enough to make this look like a more reasonable assumption.
Okay. And then, the other reason that was given was that the funds needed to be merged together in order to access a reserve account that was being held by SIRS, and the $1 million was talked about quite a bit at the study session prior.
I don't think that that was the case. I think the, my understanding from that discussion, I mean, that may have been the explanation, but we weren't accessing, it's not required that these funds be combined in order to work more closely with SIRS. That SIRS funds are unaffected by this. Does that answer the question?
I didn't think the SIRS funds were affected by it, that they were accessible, that the reserve fund of $1 million was going to be accessible to us by the combination of those things. I mean, I could go back on the tape, that's the explanation, and several questions were asked. That's what, information we were given, and that's where the huge concern came out, with the 7 percent deficit originally, now that's been changed, is that it did give the impression that it was shoring up accounts that were not sustainable. And so, since there was pretty in-depth conversation about that $1 million, and huge concern on my part on us accessing any reserve fund that isn't replenishable, and therefore cannot make what it's being used for sustainable, now it just doesn't seem to be...
No. In my discussions with risk management, that was not an issue.
I think Maria has some things she'd like to say, Maria Sabato.
Yes, I'm gonna put my neck out here as the new person, but I won't use that very often, that I'm the new person. So, my perspective, you know, when I went back to the staff after we met last week, was, I think, the importance of splitting these out, quite frankly, because my personal perspective as a budget person is that if additional funds are required for a specific use of funds, that we come forth to the council and talk specifically about what that item is. And we don't put, put two funds together and try to, you know, not that the dollars were going to be commingled, that we set to rest last week.
Right.
But truly, you know, if we need to come forth with a supplemental, because we have additional costs for a large claim, we will do that. We will do that.
Okay. And then, with this new information, are we guaranteed that in, that we are not pursuing that fund, that, to take that $1 million from that reserve?
As I just mentioned, that if the, if there is a need, we will come forth with a supplemental that relates directly to the fund, where that use of funds should come...
And it will be its own separate process, for its own separate purpose, and not just an automatic thing. Okay, as long as I have that understanding and guarantee with that. I appreciate that clarification. That does it for me. Thanks.
That was really helpful, because I do think the $1 million got very confused by all of us, so it's a good question.
Well, I need a clarification then. We weren't confused about the $1 million. There wasn't, there was originally the intent of putting it in there. It wasn't a confusion, but now you're changing it. You're not going to access that reserve fund. You're splitting these two out. We're not worried about the administrative efficiencies, and both funds, right now, as we're going to be putting them into the budget, will be flush. They will be on the positive side, as you've represented them here.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
I think we have one more comment. My comment about the $1 million is that there's a, there is confusion amongst staff and how you want to do this. And we've had a number of things that we just need to make really sure. We have lots of changing people in jobs right now. We've got to have a little grace towards one another, I believe. But this is, I appreciate your question, Member Berentine, because that helped us fish out what was going on here. I know you have more to say.
You did a beautiful job with the answer as well. Thank you.
So, I just want to say one more thing.
Yeah.
Like I mentioned last week, these are estimates. I can't promise that next year, this will look, or, you know, at the end of December, it could, could look a little different in reality, you know, because things change. It's a business, right? So, I just want to be clear. I can't guarantee that the ending fund balance next year is going to be the number that's in the budget book.
Or that we won't need to use that $1 million reserve.
Or that we might not...
But that'll be a separate thing that comes forward.
Yes.
And then, we'll find out whether we need to replenish it or not, but it'll be a separate discussion.
Correct.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions on this one? Thanks for the great work that you all put together on that one. And the last one?
Thank you, is about the balanced budget, and what we mean by a balanced budget, and why staff feels that the proposed budget that we've given you is balanced. As the information in your packet describes, and perhaps I should just read this, the city defines a balanced budget as one where the sum of the beginning fund balance plus current revenues equal or exceed current revenues, expenditures, excuse me. The charter supports this definition, as, and it states, it's a balance between the total estimated expenditures and total anticipated revenue from all sources, taking into account the estimated general fund balance, cash surplus, or deficit at the end of the current fiscal year. The operating budgets, as presented, pretty much equal. The additional money for capital projects, about $3.2 million, was included at the request of council to cover capital projects that otherwise would not be funded. I'm not sure if there is more discussion about balanced budget, what that means, or what, if there are still concerns about the proposed budget and its legality.
Councilmember Berentine?
The definition kind of gets tweaked, it's time with the structural and not, and what it basically ends up being for me is that if we're going to use any of the reserve, you cannot call it reserve and put it in as part of the, and then say that the balanced budget is balanced off of that. As our HR director brought up before, and some of the department heads probably do believe, like she said several times, my budget's zeroed out every year, so it's fine. Of course, it's zeroed out, because the charter allows for that money to be gone, and then the next year is its own budget. So, no, I don't agree. I still am gonna stick with that, within its period of time, it needs to have its, the revenues and expenses piece of that. The only other question that I wanted to ask is, will there be any change to the numbers for your reassessment of the risk management fund and the employee benefits fund? Your, I mean, while that's small, will you change the number that we're...
That is in the final proposed budget?
Yes.
It will reflect our latest estimate.
Right. And then, also, because we were given the information for that RAD tool, that the line, and that being representative of what we believe is a line item budget on the detail page, that there is, at some point, I would like, as we're going into the next cycle on this, it does not match the budget. I mean, it doesn't. So, if you're gonna tell me that the line item is what's making up this budget, and I go and look at what you believe is the line item, and it doesn't make up the budget, then we have to have some further conversation on whether that's a realistic tool or not. We're too late in the process now for that. But by all estimates, there's a 20, 20 percent difference on some items that we're looking at. That's huge. So, we need to get a much better grip on, on the beginning process of it, because even at a 30,000-foot level, you don't just jump up that high. You've got to start somewhere. And that line item, that information, is where all of this stream ends up making the ocean of the budget. So, if that isn't accurate, if that's not, not something that we can go back and look at, then it makes the bigger numbers less meaningful. So, we'll come to get a little bit more information on that later. That would be fine. So, just those two things.
Thank you.
Do you have any response to that?
I'm smiling, because I think that's one of my largest responsibilities, actually, over the next several months, to come back and actually, perhaps, do additional information sharing regarding the RAD tool and the line item budget.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Russell?
And I just would like to say to this council, because I think this is something that's going to be difficult for us, is I do believe a balanced budget means the revenues equal the expenses. And if we continue to spend, I think this council needs to get to that point where we can do that, because we will then have more money to spend on capital projects, rather than always putting that, that money we have left into the budget. So, I'm hoping that as we move forward, especially with new staff, we will be able to tighten this up and address those issues, and get back to where we can become healthy, instead of always having to live in debt and talk about going into further debt. So...
Well, could I say that the, the additional $3 million that's being pulled out of reserves, essentially, is going into capital? It's not paying for salaries, it's not paying for pencils or paper clips. It is a capital purchase. And that was done at your...
Right. And I understand that. But part of the problem is, once we get down to that 16.67 level, if we go farther, then we're spending our rainy day funds. So...
Councilmember Berentine?
That, and then, I just wanted that one more, that other additional question about the Inglewood Environmental Foundation, because I'm very concerned that those CAM charges are being put in our public works department budget, and also, then if they were taken out, kind of seems a little sparse, given the, so if you could just remember to put that on the request for information as well.
Certainly will.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions for, for any of the five issues? So, council, is there anything you want to sort of toss around here, as you're thinking through any of this, that we need to get more information on, that we did not cover tonight? Councilmember Berentine?
Aside from the additional information that I've asked for, I am not comfortable voting for the budget until I am aware we're, we are either being reimbursed for things contractually, and I think Eve is a little bit of a microcosm of conducting business. And so, since we all understand how separate those two are, that we're charging for services, that we're getting paid for services, where $326,000 is going, and how we're coming up with these formulas would give me a lot more comfort in, in how we're handling those two change. The combination at the end of the, end of it made me realize that maybe we've had some, should have had some better conversations about the combinations of previous departments as well, and the effect that it had on them. And I just am not as comfortable, when I went again to the RAD tool, which I don't, I don't look at as a line item budget, I'm not comfortable with that. But if that's the, what the example of it's supposed to be for the city, and the huge discrepancy between that and the actual budget, it just isn't giving me a level of comfort. I don't know if we can resolve that prior to the vote or not. I have asked some specific questions, but aside from those specific questions, I'm not even sure that even with that, we can get to a level of comfort for me, given that. But I do appreciate the work that you guys have done on this, and welcome aboard, now that we know you're here. Difficult time for you to come in, and I'm giving that a lot of grace. It is what it is. So, thank you very much for the work you did in answering some of the questions. At least, I feel a lot better about the human resources, and over the risk management, and the employee benefit with the change. And it should have been changed and split back out, and I appreciate that that's been done. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Anyone have anything? All right. Oh, councilmember Sierra?
I think I have comments. So, I guess, in terms of the budget, obviously, that, I believe, is our number one priority as a council. I know we're meeting deadlines. We were hoping to have a first reading of the budget on the 15th of this month, which is next Monday. My concern is, and I asked this question to Director, yeah, Director Sabatka, correct? Okay. In terms of just what would happen if we did not move forward with the budget, as is for 2018? And my concern is, you know, just being a few months into council, I know that what we vote on every other Monday night within council are items that were approved as part of the budget for the previous year. So, what does that look like in 2019 if we don't approve a budget? And you actually made a good point, because you came back with an answer here, is that we've already approved contracts with the... we've already approved contracts with the Inglewood Employees Association, as well as the Police Benefit Association. There was a 3% increase there, so we're gonna have to account for that next year, plus there's increases for the benefits, which we're estimating about 15%. So, basically, the comment that you made after that was pretty dire in terms of we would have to reduce staff, and everything we're hearing from the community is that we need increased staff because there's increased services or increased needs within the city. We're growing, and there's a lot more going on, and so I'm concerned that if we don't approve the budget, that we're getting into a situation that would not be in the best of Inglewood. So, I guess it's more of a comment, but I'm not sure if there's anything else that you want to add to that, or if there's ever been a time that the Inglewood City Council has not approved the budget, if that's ever happened.
My understanding is it's never happened, that it's always approved, with numerous changes and amendments.
Right.
But it's always been approved.
Right. And part of what we've added to the budget for 2019 are improvements to the roof. We, as part of the capital projects, we've also added the additional work to the entryway of the Inglewood Rec Center.
Correct.
And so, that's a revenue generator, and so that's the reason why we added it as part of the capital projects, because it will bring additional revenues to the city. If we don't approve the budget, those things don't happen.
Correct. Yes, you're right. Mayor, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished at this point, yes.
Ciara, so, yeah. Mayor Portem Russell.
I don't know that it's ever, I'm not saying that it should happen, or it shouldn't happen, but I don't think it's as dire as we think it is. I think that there, we're locked into the 2018 budget as far as mill levy and increases there. If there are emergency needs, you can come to council for emergency expenditures. Is that correct? I mean, and let's say it wasn't passed, is it possible to supplement the 2018 budget with the employee raises, with the salaries that have already been negotiated?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Do you understand it?
If I can rephrase. I think what the mayor Portem is asking, could we afford to increase salaries after just rolling, using the 18 budget again? And the response to that is, I'm in the midst of calculating that, quite frankly. I would need to get the wages to understand what that impact would be, and whether or not our reserves are right, would cover that, quite frankly, because we don't want to get into the situation that I believe you were just talking about, to fall below the two months' reserve in the event that we did have some other emergency that we would need to cover. So, I can't answer that right now, but it's certainly something that we were talking about today as a staff.
Thank you.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. It's my understanding that if we don't pass the 2019 budget, 2018 goes into effect, right? And so, that would mean the three new positions we would like to see in 2019 would not take place.
Correct.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Now, I do want to make some comments here, before I go back to Councilmember Berantine. We're in a, if we're in a place where we are thinking we're not going to pass this budget, I find that really difficult. No one has come up with some major ways to cut the budget in order to create something new. I mean, I haven't heard, Mayor Portem, you haven't come forward with anything in particular? If there was something by now, we've spent six months or more on this. If there's some hat trick that's gonna go on on Monday night next week, I certainly don't want our staff to be caught off guard. We're gonna have to go into reserves then, and that's not really what we want to do either. I would really urge everybody to look through this and find a way to go forward with this, so that we can then begin to think, if we don't ever want to be using our reserves or anything, then we're gonna have to do some pretty serious rebudgeting, and that's fine, let's decide to do that and figure out where we're gonna get the revenue to do the things that we know the $70 million long list is. We've got to come up with something, we can't just keep attacking this without any solutions to it. So, I encourage you all to dig deep on this one. I don't, I don't know what else we can do. It's, I think it's one of the best budgets I have ever seen. I'm very thankful for the work you've done. We've had some tweaking, I think are great questions. I love that you brought up the technician thing last week. I wish we'd done that earlier, but it's fine, we've got enough time to do that. But let's know if there's something else the shoe is gonna drop on, that we know it now. This is not helpful. It's gotta be discouraging to staff. Councilmember, request.
Information, it's just a majority of council to pass a budget.
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Berantine.
Well, we certainly saw that just a couple of months changed two funds from 7% deficit to, I mean, positive, so maybe there was, maybe pieces of the budget were also needed to be looked at a little bit more. As far as the mayors having ideas, I think we've had some pretty good ideas come forward about some of the money. Contractually alone, with the Inglewood Environmental Foundation, there could be hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're entitled to have reimbursed us, that we're not, that we're not taking advantage of, with a for-profit corporation that's making, according to their June meeting, making money. So, if we've been paying staff and limiting our resources, that's one suggestion. That audit would have helped to go ahead and make that part of this budget, but we didn't do that, and it's a shame we didn't protect our employees that way, or the separate corporation, and make it a little bit more understandable to everybody exactly what the obligation back and forth for that is. Some of the efficiencies that were found when needed have been pretty useful, maybe a better, a more robust conversation about some of those, but we certainly took $450,000 that was ID'd, identified as personnel costs, and they were not. So, according to that tool, when somebody's identifying those as, as cost for personnel at $450,000, and they're really only a little over $100,000, I mean, that makes a huge difference in the way we're looking at it. And I think what makes the employees feel comfortable certainly is that we have a sustainable benefits package, so we want to make sure that we're at least giving accurate information out there. And we do want to be very careful about adding any additional positions in. If we do think that in the future, that financially it won't be sustainable, that's not a fair thing to do. Not a fair thing to offer the employees a benefit packet and then put out a budget that says we can't afford it. That would scare the daylights out of me if I was an employee, so we do need to make sure that we're looking at those, and I appreciate that that information came back. So, I do think that we've offered some suggestions in there, but in all fairness, we have to have a little bit better conversation about what opportunities we have to cut things. So far, there's been a little bit of a division on council, mostly to the mayor's point about we just hand over the money to a department and expect that they're the experts, and then if something fails, then, but we can't do, we can't do both. I mean, if we want to have some input on how this money is spent, we don't have input on it. We create, we are responsible for this budget, we are responsible for the taxpayers' money. So, in the end, I think it's a little unfair for us to just go, here's a pile of money, you guys do what you want, and then if it hits the fan, then do we make you responsible? Or we, should we take the responsibility of what we're supposed to do with this? So, I do think that there are issues, like $236,000, there should never be emergency charges, and then all of a sudden, we're eight months into it, and we haven't seen a dime of it spent when it was labeled as an emergency. So, the council does have to take more responsibility for this budget, following the charter and following the law, so that we're just not putting it all, all of that burden on you. In the end, we're responsible for this, and I think we've come up with a lot of suggestions on exactly how we could save money. Let's make sure that we're following the charter, that we're bidden out, that we're not putting ourselves in emergency situations, and I totally agree that we should, if we're gonna spend the reserve, then say we're gonna spend the reserve, but it cannot be added and counted as savings and counted as spending at the same time, cannot do both. And that's a similar thing that was a problem in 2015, where we had the CFO at that time saying that's part of the problem that got us into these issues. So, I do take responsibility for our part of it. I think that I've brought up several suggestions of where we can recoup money and where we're obligated to be paid for things that I think would help, and I'm certainly all for this council getting together to come up with suggestions on how we could stop overspending in some areas here and start prioritizing better, including the tool that we've used for the budgeting, having a 20% difference from the budget that ends up being created. So, hopefully, we'll just have a much better understanding of it, and can certainly continue to give suggestions on where I think we can get more money or reduce some costs.
Thank you. Councilmember Ciara.
So, is the expectation still to have the first reading next Monday night?
I believe so, yes.
So, is there any other, is there anything stopping us from going to first reading next Monday and having more indecision about moving forward Monday night?
Are you asking for new information, because we have several of our specific things?
Well, yeah, exactly. We have additional information that's coming up, and obviously, we're not, you know, we're gonna get that information at some point, it may not. I understand the concerns of Member Berantine and Member Russell about just getting that additional information. Unfortunately, it doesn't really meet the timeline that we set forth last week.
For one piece of it, yes.
For one piece of it. So, I understand that concern, but obviously, we still want to move forward with the first reading next Monday. So, I guess from other people on staff, is there anything else that is stopping us from moving forward with first reading?
Mayor Portem Russell.
I don't think there's anything to stop us from moving forward with first reading, but you jogged my memory, because I do have a question about the 7% increase for the sewer, and we have not gotten the sewer rate study. It is going to the water board tomorrow night.
The, that was a very preliminary study. What I think the suggestion that the Water and Sewer Board will be is that we need to do a more detailed cost study to make sure that not only is it fair to our residents, but that we're paying, I mean, that the connectors and our other clients are being charged appropriately. So, I think the recommendation is to do more in-depth, so that the answers to your questions will be forthcoming. The 7% was designed as a bridge.
Right, okay, so the 7% is designed as a bridge, but what happens then, we raise the rates on everybody, and we find out that we are not spreading the?
The burden?
The burden, yes. We're not spreading the burden to the connector districts.
Well, then you could change the rates appropriately. I mean, I think that's the purpose of the study.
So, you, we could decrease the rates for our rate payers and increase the rate for the other rate payers?
I certainly couldn't guarantee that, but if the study suggests that, yes, that would be an option.
Well, it's an option, but I've never seen, once taxes or fees are increased, we never get money back. It just doesn't happen.
But it could.
Anything else?
No.
Price of bananas are the only things that seem to go down in life. Councilmember Berantine.
I thought it was actually still your question piece, but so I'm just asking your question.
Thank you.
I'm just asking your question.
Member Ciara, anything else?
So, I'm just asking you a question.
Sure.
And yours, a clarification. Are you asking whether it will go to first reading?
Right.
Or whether it will pass?
Yes, so it would be the latter. So, is there anything that would stop us from passing the first reading next Monday, with the information that we have as of right now?
So, to that, then, I think Council, Mayor Portem was correct, nothing stops it from going to the first reading, and to, and to get a straw poll here would be inappropriate, because you'd be asking for a vote on the budget. So, I just wanted to clarify which one you were looking for.
Absolutely, so she's right. So, it's, you know, I think we have, I think we have consensus for going to a first reading.
Okay.
And whatever anyone, what I'm asking is, is there anything else that we could be doing between now and then to make sure all the questions are answered, that would satisfy people to make a wise vote? And it sounds like they're all out there, what we need. So, I'm gonna say, let's take a break right now, unless you had more, you wanted to, we're a little bit behind, so let's continue on.
Thank you for your time.
Let's take a 10-minute?
She just went on a tangent, that one over there.
Minute break, we'll be back.
It was a good question, though.
Do the police department head question?
She just jogged a memory or something. She just jogged a memory or something.
We're going to get this first.
I think it's good to use a little time there.
Is this a, the, uh...
I want to reset.
I reset back to make sure it's changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
That's all was.
All right, so.
Oh, you had the same issue?
I just need to reset my password. This could very well be user error.
Actually, I've been wanting to do the same thing, too, and I can't, you know, restart to.
So I'm making it simple for people.
I'll look at it.
It's all tied.
I mean, I can, if you want to take it something specific, I can do it right here.
Actually, I was going to just.
Uh, here.
So we keep.
Okay, so here, let's do this. You didn't even have to do it. You got one that you specifically, just type it in, hit tab, type it in again. So what if you want it to be, and then you're going to go back to the Wi-Fi and check it out, and then you know, I can.
But also, are we only doing, I'm more concerned about.
Well, that's when you're changing.
Okay.
That's what we're collecting, we have the password.
How do I know that you do that?
Everybody goes.
Getting some more tea.
Yep.
I don't know if it works as well, but we'll try and hopefully change the password.
Well, that's, right, and actually, that's good.
Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Wrong.
Jeremy.
But, yeah, we're just going to, yeah.
No, we're looking here.
So, would you have a password?
Is, like, any apartments, like, a, two, three?
Need a cap.
No, but it's, it's, actually, we have it right now.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So we should do all that?
Yeah.
I think so.
Remember that, I mean, if you did it on, uh, the Google.
I'm getting some more tea.
So, okay, so I go.
Yep.
Yep.
I don't know if it works as well, but we'll try and hopefully change the password.
Right, and actually, that's good.
Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Wrong. Jeremy. But, yeah, we're just going to, yeah.
No, we're looking here.
So, would you have a password?
Is, like, any apartments, uh, like, a, two, three?
Need a cap.
No, but it's, it's, actually, we have it right now.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So, everything?
Yeah.
I think it's, I mean, if you did it on, uh, the Google.
It's, yeah.
Minecraft?
Minecraft?
Minecraft, too. You tried to play Minecraft, right?
Yeah.
Trying to get some game on?
Yep.
Maybe you have one there.
That's a good idea. I'm just going to use this one. Oh, it's not that one. I feel like, yum, I've heard about those.
Paleo and dark.
Have you guys tried those?
No.
I saw, I saw that recently, I'm like, I'm going to try that. Wow, okay.
Yep, so good. Paleo, which is, I just sent it to Krista. Well, yeah, I'll send it. Well, she likes, she bakes, dude, so.
Oh, sure. I didn't even respond to it.
That's a more likely.
If you are able to vote, and we'll, you think that you're aware?
I'm one of those weird guys that make.
Oh, do you know? Yeah, Linda told me that, just to make sure. Okay. Because I wasn't sure, like, just a sudden, so.
Just make her make it.
Pretty sure. Just that's why she was feeding. Okay. Make sure, yeah, you should. Not that bad.
Okay, good.
It's just unlinked me.
Yeah.
It's just, like, oh, we have the people or something.
Huh.
But you should watch it, so I guess I didn't respond to their, because I don't know. Have you talked to the city attorney about it, have you asked him?
No.
But I just didn't put that today, and I was like, I didn't want to just, like, send it to him.
Very good question, yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
I'll follow up and make sure.
Yeah, let me know, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
You just have to watch it?
Website.
That was, um...
You can monitor your...
Really?
Can I also be able to...
What? I just want to make sure I have enough, uh, time to time. Okay, so I need, oh, you're okay with them? Oh, that one's plugged in, right?
Yeah.
They're going to sync my...
Did you guys send us instructions on having a location out of my case? Did it ask for permission to save?
Is this the same thing I had? Is it going?
You guys gave us something printed?
You know what, then it might be.
Because I had the printed version, but...
This, let's try this one.
One of these doesn't always work, so.
Oh.
I know.
Like, organizing.
I'm spoiled.
You are spoiled.
I had no idea, all these years. A person up here was staying warm.
And those are beautiful.
That's perfect.
And you should pull up any years' messages. You want to release them, this is one time, permit them.
No. Weird.
Are we using another, I can't remember if the police headquarters has PowerPoint. Thank you, Sam.
So they can permit this.
Okay, that makes sense. We might not need this. Sam? Is there a PowerPoint for this next one? Don't think so? Can we undo this and I can put my, although I don't know if this is going to fit or not, work.
You want the heater on?
Right. I need to, I need to plug this in.
Oh, so this is both guarding your...
Yeah.
Let's turn that off.
But it wasn't pulling juice from that, so.
Oh, that's right, because that's the faulty guy.
Yeah.
That's when you tried messing with the last one.
It makes you sad. It's really sad. Mr. Cone. Oh, let's see, I think this is actually, oh, you need this, right? I know. I'm spoilt. You are spoiled. I had no idea, all these years. A person up here was staying warm.
And those are beautiful.
That's perfect.
And you should pull up any years' messages. You want to release them, this is one time, permit them.
No. Weird.
Are we using another, I can't remember if the police headquarters has PowerPoint. Thank you, Sam.
So they can permit this.
Okay, that makes sense. We might not need this. Sam? Is there a PowerPoint for this next one? Don't think so? Can we undo this and I can put my, although I don't know if this is going to fit or not, work.
You want the heater on?
Right. I need to, I need to plug this in.
Oh, so this is both guarding your...
Yeah.
Let's turn that off.
But it wasn't pulling juice from that, so.
Oh, that's right, because that's the faulty guy.
Yeah.
That's when you tried messing with the last one.
It makes you sad. It's really sad. Mr. Cone. Oh, let's see, I think this is actually, oh, you need this, right? Let's see if it actually works on this.
Now, remember, that's, that's really give a whole lot of cheese.
I know, one of these...
That's the one he usually on, oh, wait, oh, I was going to say, that's the one he usually uses on phone.
Right. Yeah, I know.
If you're trying to charge that guy.
Yeah, it's got a... No, yeah, I know. Right. No, this is the one I need, just so we have timing. All right.
You know that sinus thing back your throat when you're starting to not feel so hot?
Thank you. Next up is item four, our police department headquarters bond premium and police department fund analysis and finance administrative services acting director Maria Sabata is here to present along with Larry Nimmo, I think, right? Great, thanks.
Okay, good evening again, mayor and council. So last week, we brought to you a memo with the proposed expenditures using the bond premium. And two questions were asked that we are coming back with answers for tonight. The two questions that we heard, we were, we were asked what the interest was on the bond premium itself and also to specifically answer Mayor Protem's question regarding the budget balance of 1.448 in the budget book versus a reconciliation to the summary that we shared with you as part of the memo from last week. So the memo that was included in your information provided before tonight answers those questions, and I'm just going to walk through them hopefully very proficiently, so we can move on to the next topic. So I'll start by talking about the bond premium itself and the additional cost to the city as a result of that. So, you know, just in summary, we talked last week that $5.6 million of additional funds were generated after the cost of issuance and the underwriter fees above the estimated $27 million. And again, just to repeat, the ballot measure actually approved, or the ballot measure approved by the citizens included a repayment cost of up to $47.9 million. The total debt service, including the premium, totals $42.9 million over the life of the bonds, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that versus what would have happened if we would have done the coupons at a lower rate in attachment one. But before I do that, you know, as we talked last week, there are two options that we can consider for the bond premium use. We can choose to address other safety services needs and other capital improvements for the Englewood Police Department as we outlined last week. And Larry and Vance went through the list of items for the request. Or the funds could be used to pay down the debt. There are no other other options. This money is not fungible for any other use. And when we spoke last week, we let you know that if we decided to pay down the debt, there would be an opportunity cost associated with that of approximately $1.1 million to the city. So if you turn to the attachment one, which is the general obligation bond series 2017 premium power structure comparison, in the first column, the $27 million premium coupons, this is, these are actually the key statistics for what we currently are obligated to pay back. So we've talked about the fact that the project fund deposit was, you know, the $32.6 million. The coupon was approximately $5.004, and you can see the true interest cost of 2.82%. So our total debt service is 42, almost 42.9 million, which is well within what the ballot allowed, and our annual average debt service is $2.142 million. The second column actually is, demonstrates if we would have issued the coupons without a premium, we would have received the $27 million, which after issuance would have been $26.8 million, and the average coupon would have been 3%, and the true interest cost on that would have been 3.04%. So already, we're seeing savings in the interest that we're paying on the overall structure of the financing as a result of issuing with a premium. And you can see the total debt service, it would be lower, and the annual average debt service would be $1.8 million. So in effect, by issuing the coupons higher than market, given the investor preference at that time, and based on the direction that council gave staff, and as outlined in the ballot, the cost of inflating the coupon is the difference between the $2.1 and the $1.8 million. That's as simple as I can explain it. I've never been in the bond market, but I hope that that satisfies the question that we had regarding how much the inflated coupon rate issuing it with a premium costs us on an annual basis.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
Thank you. I understand what the opportunity of money is, but thank you for clearly, just honestly admitting that the money costs us money. It still costs us. I realize the opportunity of it, and I realize what the bond said and what the limitations are on it and what the voters voted on, but it, it's, it costs us money to have that money. That money was not free. It's not some kind of Ponzi scheme thing going on, and we have to pay it back. But it is within the parameters of the bond issue, and it is something that was available to do, whether we should have or not, I don't know yet. But I appreciate you putting it out and being honest enough. At this late stage of it, all I actually wanted was for somebody to at least say that the money isn't free, that it does have to be paid back, and that there is a difference between this and having it at a higher interest rate and the lower interest rate. And that was that we garnered that additional money to spend. Whether that's truly what the voters understood at the time or not, they need to be aware of what they're doing, and council needs to be much more aware if we ever endeavor to do a bond issue, what the cost of that is and what the language is so that we understand it better, too. Thank you very much for the information. I greatly appreciate it.
One thing that I would like to mention, though, I mean, as, as we move forward, you know, if, if council does decide to move forward with purchasing the additional equipment that's been requested, I will say, if we went to borrow money right now to either pay for those items or other things, we would be paying a much higher interest rate. So I want to be very clear, you know, the decision was made a couple of years ago, markets were different, and so we certainly would be in a different position right now to go out and borrow the money.
But the only way we can do it is if we're being honest. I mean, we have to be honest about the whole process, and I do understand the opportunity cost, though, thank you. But thank you for laying it out clearly, that it does cost us money, and we just need to make the decision whether that's worth it or not. Thank you.
Any other questions about this item? So I also wanted to say that when we decided a while back to do the premium, I particularly didn't think it was free money. It was money at such a lower, it gave us so much more to leverage for doing more things within the realm of the debt service that we had committed to as a public. So if, I think this makes it clear to citizens what is actually going on here, and it's only, what, $300,000, $400,000 is what we're talking about, compared to what some people have said $5 million. It's quite a, quite a difference. I've seen all kinds of things coming back from people saying, wait, you're just, you just picked another, you know, we're now paying debt at a higher rate for $5 million versus, or of $5 million rather than on that. So anyway, I appreciate...
Could you clarify where you're seeing that it's $300,000?
Well, the difference in the, the annual debt service, yeah.
The debt service of 428, and then the debt service on the other is $36,000.
I'm talking about the annual average debt service, is what I'm talking about.
But that's only $300,000 per year.
Right.
Okay, but the actual debt service difference is between 42.8 million and 36 million. That's, that's where people are getting the five...
Right, right.
Six million dollars. Well, you said you didn't know, so...
Right, but that is without the $5 million in it, though. So I'm saying, I'm saying with the extra money that we get, it's a much better, that, I mean, that's what you're saying, right? Is that what?
Yes.
Or maybe not saying, we all think differently about these numbers, so...
So the, so the total debt service in column one is 42.9 million. That is with the additional funds, which is, is what Mayor Olson is referring to. And, and so there is a difference, but we are getting the benefit of the additional funds to spend on the safety equipment.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but it's the difference between paying back 42 million, 42.8 million and 36.0, right? And, and still at the lower interest rate.
Right.
Right.
Yep. All right, great, going on.
So I guess with the explanation, we kind of come back to our question that we asked last week, is, is council good with us starting to move forward? Pardon?
I'm not done.
Oh.
She's still...
Mayor tripped you up there.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I would like to talk a little bit about the budget before Larry asks that question, if I could. Because I included in the packet also attachment two. I want to be clear that I've asked staff to add a column for informational purposes only for 2020, because I felt it was important to talk about the project in totality. So it's, it's different than what's in the budget book, but if you decide to move forward and approve it, we would take 2020 off of the page, and you would only see up to 19 as you see other funds as well. I think what's important to note, again, is that there were estimates that were used to put together the previous book. We actually, as a staff, went and we talked about the timing of the spend, not only for the project itself, but then also the items that we came last week to you and asked you to approve. I also asked staff to put actual, in the left-hand column, names for each of the items, which typically what we do in the budget book is we use the CAFR terminology, and I think as, as I learn more about the budget, if there's a project like this, we'll try and break it out, so it's a little bit easier. We'll use the CAFR language, but we'll also add some other things, so it's a little bit easier as you're reading it. So in my, it was funny, because I woke up thinking, how am I going to show this to council? Because this obviously didn't work, but it served a purpose. And I thought, well, I'll put it into the budget format, but I'll talk a little bit about the differences. So I mentioned that I did not include interest income in this particular analysis. In the proposed budget, you can see right underneath revenue, there is interest income, okay? So that's included in here. And then as you go down the page, you'll see the other financing sources of $32.8 million. That's the total proceeds before underwriter fees and bond issuance. The underwriter fees and the bond issuance is the $194,585,000 that you'll see. So if you take the difference of the $32,998 minus the $194,000, that's the $32,631.78 that was on my worksheet over here, so total, total sources of funds. Under capital outlay, I also asked staff to split out the police headquarters building versus the equipment and other improvements that we came and asked you for approval last week. If you add the police headquarters building across, so if you take the 2017 actual, the 2018 estimate, and the proposed budget, you'll see that that totals $27,250,000, which is the $27 million originally approved plus the $250,000 contingency that was on the list over here. The next line item for equipment and other improvements, if you add across there, it comes to $3,783,000. And if I did my math right today, it is, from my spreadsheet, it was $3,972,000 that included all of the items that we were requesting, including the contingencies. We take out the contingencies of $204,000, we take out the $250,000 that I had just mentioned, because the $204,000 was to actually get us up to the $27 million spend. The $250,000 was on top of that. So that total is, if you do that math, it would be $3,783,000, which if you add those lines across, that's what it totals. So the total project, including interest income that we currently have in the budget, that will change, because we will have interest income next year more than likely. Right now, where it stands is $33,121,000 in total. So that includes interest on top of, interest of $490,000 on top of the proceeds for $32,632,000. So what I want to say is that if you approve all of the items that were on this list, at the end of 2020, you would still have $2,880,000, I can't read at this late hour, $36.35, that could be allocated for other uses as put forth in the ballot measure and as, as you had approved before. So hopefully, that gives you a walkthrough of how the budget will look, because what this, what you were looking at on page 291 wasn't the whole project, and the timing of spend could play a part in how this $1.4 million was derived. But I will say this $1.4 million, if you compare it to my $1.598, very close. So we just, we had some updates to the timing that pushed some of the spending out into future years. So hopefully, that gives you a walkthrough of how the budget will look. Because what this, what you were looking at on page 291 wasn't the whole project, and the timing of spend could play a part in how this 1.4 million was derived. But I will say this 1.4 million, if you compare it to my 1.598, very close. So we just, we had some updates to the timing that pushed some of the spending out into future years. So I hope that explains, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mayor Portman, so?
So in response to my question from last week, we were anticipating spending these in the budget before, I mean, the $3 million that's here was allocated to be spent.
Yes, in part, it was. You know, it wasn't specifically for these items, right, until we brought it to your attention last week, but yes.
I do, I have a comment, and here's my concern. I'm not concerned with spending money to equip the new police department. But this council has asked for some things from the chief, and we haven't gotten the answers back to that, and I am concerned about that. The citizens have generously opened their pocketbook to provide for the police department to have state-of-the-art, and now council is looking at giving them more equipment, and I want them to have the equipment to do their job. I do. But the citizens of this city are very unhappy with code enforcement and with the police department, and we need to address those issues. What are we going to give the citizens in exchange for what they've given us? That is my biggest concern, and I don't know how else to address it.
I think that is a really good point, and you're really talking to the seven of us, trying to figure out how to hold accountable to what we're giving. And I, that's why I said what I said last week, I want a 60-day plan. If this goes through, I want to know in 60 days, what's the plan on code? Maybe it's a beginning, but we've got to have some timelines. One of the things I appreciated about Jill Wilson when she was on was she always had a deadline she'd make us go to. You remember that? But I think we need to do that on this. I think we're asking for some really important equipment here, and I think it's needed. It's separate from what we also need to do in holding them accountable, though, in my mind. But I think you're right, that we have got to figure out what it is we want to be state-of-the-art in the way that we operate, not just the building. But I agree with you.
Thank you. Others? Councilmember Barantine?
Where's the breakdown of what you were talking about, the additional?
That was last.
So we had provided it last week in the memo. Do, I don't know what we would typically do in a case like this if you're asking for it again.
I just thought it was some additional pieces to this piece. And also, because if I'm research correct, that's, was one of the original conversations is if we needed to fund, if we needed to have new chairs, if we needed to have new equipment, if we needed to have new walkie-talkies, if we needed to have new cars, that it should be handled in a different way than through a bond that we're paying 20 or 30 years out. You don't finance those kind of things. This was for more capital improvements fees. And so when I made the comment that the money is fungible, is that then we pushed things that should have been in the budget, that we're making sure that we're saving for and allocating for those funds, that we're using this and kind of giving a false, that those things are sustainable, because then they're not later. I mean, because those are more general fund things, but we're not having to use general fund money on them, we're using this. And I do agree with you that that is in keeping with the craftily worded bond issue, that if it's for safety or if it's for, but those are taking things that normally would be paid for in the general fund budget and putting them then there, and then, you know, at least if we're going to do this, have to acknowledge that the replacement of it, the upkeep of it, the maintenance, those kind of things, those cars are not going to last 20 years. We're going to have to make sure that those things are, we remember that those are actually general fund budget items, so that was my original concern with doing that. And that was a huge conversation that was had when we did this process, that we were not going to. If we needed those things, then maybe we should have had a little less of a building instead of having to do that piece of it. So I want to make sure that we have some attention paid to the upkeep of how we're going to maintain that through the life of this building, if that's what it's being used for. And that's only going to happen by purposely making sure that we're budgeting for those, because we're not going to get another shot. Once that money's gone, it doesn't come up again. So if we could just make sure that we keep those in mind, I am concerned about using them, I am concerned, I do agree with you, it's part of the bond and the wording of that, but we have to keep, we have to keep in mind that the car isn't going to last for 20 years, that the walkie-talkies are not going to last for 20 years, that probably the chairs aren't going to last for 20 years. So as we're funding those things, how we're going to do that upkeep and replacement so that we don't end up with this building being in the kind of shape it was at the end of the period of time that the last one was.
Thanks.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you for breaking the equipment and other improvements out separately. I think that is helpful to see it in that way, so thank you. I'm still supportive of going forward and approving those additional equipment that the police department needs. I think it's important that we give them all the tools they need to do their job effectively. But that being said, I do also want to maybe see if we can schedule a study session to talk about the 60-day plan that was requested. So I don't know if we should just go ahead and schedule that within the 60 days, so it's on our calendar.
For code enforcement? Yeah, or utilization of that position, yeah, and code in general. I think we put it on, didn't we?
It is on.
Yeah, we put it on. I can't remember where it is, but we did. Mayor Portman and I figured out a time with Dorothy last week.
That should be helpful.
And we may want to add to that, I think what Councilmember Barantine is suggesting is really important, too, some sort of, and I know that departments have done this, figuring out what the lifespan of some of these, of this equipment is, and at what point will they hit our budgets in the future, so that there's some kind of plan. I know that we've done that with a variety of equipment and cars and trucks and gators and whatever, but maybe that needs to be clearer, what the plan is. And then, so Councilmember Martinez, so is there other questions for either of these two before we kind of take a consensus about how we want to do the premium? Okay. Moving on to, let's do a little bit of a round robin, then. I don't know, Mr. Questa, if you're ready?
Sure. I will support, I do want to give the police department all the tools they need. Our first responders are maybe our most valuable asset within the city. I'm grateful for the job they do. I think it's a good question, that we do have the bond in hand that we can dip into, but if we didn't have the bond, where would we get the radio system purchase and the new record management system, the more critical items? What would we do without those? That's a million bucks between those two, and where would that money come from if we didn't have the bond to dip to? So I think very fair questions being asked on that. I do appreciate the idea of really getting some sort of timeline and plan of what we're going to do and what are the action items on code enforcement. I have heard concerns from citizens regarding code enforcement, as I think everybody has here. I haven't heard as many regarding specifically the police department, and I'm sure there's always, you know, issues that need to be dealt with, but I think that the Inglewood Police Department is very well-supported throughout the community. The citizens were incredibly generous in improving this particular bond issue, and I think that these tools are within the language of that bond, so I'll move forward.
Well said, Member Questa. We forget about the fact that the bond actually is a vote of confidence, right? Member Wink?
Yeah, I concur with members Martinez and Questa, we should support the department with these funds.
Mayor Portman, that's it.
I'm going to wait.
Mayor Barantine?
I agree with Councilmember Questa, we should be supporting our police department, we should be supporting our police department all the time. We should know what equipment that they need on a regular basis, and we shouldn't hope for some windfall from the citizens to go ahead and then, you know, how generous we all are, to just finally go ahead and support them once we go ahead and do an additional $5 million like this. This money is costing us, this is an additional payback of $6.83 million. This money is costing us $1.2 million additional. And at this point, it's just a relief to finally have somebody at least admit that and be honest about it. Then you have to go, well, this is at a lower interest rate. Well, then, who said we were going to have to borrow money to keep our police department in proper equipment? We shouldn't have to be borrowing money ever to do that. It should be the normal course of our budget to address those needs. That is a major function of municipal government is the police department. So I think that it came to this point, it's ridiculous and inappropriate, that now the only way that we see fit to go ahead and give proper equipment is by these means. That being said, I do think that it's within the bond language, but the citizens are paying heavy for it, and if we have it in our budget every year so that they have the proper equipment, that we have a discussion and a decision on whether they need the Bearcat, or whether they need more new cars, or whether we should all do, that should be a discussion for every single budget and not ever need it again, where we have to go to the citizens for a bond issue just for our police department to have what they need on a normal day-to-day for their operations. Absolutely shameful that that ended up happening. And the citizens are going to pay for it. They're going to pay an extra $1.2 million for that, to provide that equipment, instead of it just being the normal course of business for this council to put it in the budget. And that's where, as Councilmember Questa has suggested, I believe we should do from here going forward so that we don't end up in this situation again. And again, greatly appreciate, Larry, the work that you've done in following up with the change on two directors, I believe, for all of what's been going on, and the addition of our new director as well, coming in at kind of a contentious time. I believe that this is a lot of additional work to try and catch up and get this. But more than anything, everybody will have a higher level of confidence in what this council and what this city does, if we're just upfront and honest about what we're doing and not try and call anything by any other name other than what it is. And then people deal with it much, much, much better than trying to go ahead and feel that they're having the wool pulled over their eyes. And I greatly appreciate the upfront, honest way that you presented this. I will support what the bond issue did. I may disagree with that it was needed, but I do believe that the wording allows for what you're doing. I just hope it's not necessary in the future. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sierra?
Yeah, I'm-
We're just doing consensus here, so we're already there, but if you don't, so, but keep going, I don't want to-
So no, yeah, so I'm willing to move forward. I actually do agree with Member Barantine with one of her earlier statements about the money should have been going more towards anything that, you know, with the 20-year shelf lap and above. So I agree with that, but I do want to move forward with it, and, you know, my approval.
The only reason why I made that little comment there is we've been accused of making votes here. We're not voting right now, we're just getting everybody on track with where we are with this. So I do want to make a couple of comments about this. Are you finished, Councilmember Sierra?
I am, yeah.
Great, thanks. I really disagree that we have pulled any wool over anyone's eyes on this. This has been an open process. We have talked about the premium. We actually asked the city council that ruled on this, asked for this to be done. This is not some new thing. We did talk about it at the time, and there was disagreement, and that's, you know, the way it is. We voted to do it, though, and then we came, you have come back every time with what exactly you want to use it for. We did not go out to bond our police department for equipment. We did not go for a bond to do equipment. We went out to do a building, and anything more we could get from it, we asked for in order to get the lowest rate we could. And I am so thankful for the work that you all did, and part of our city manager and finance folks in the past. Council decided to go for the premium, so we did make that decision. And we've had constant, ongoing plans every year and every budget for replacement of equipment. That is there, let's just make it more clear, because it sounds like some people are unaware that that's always built in, that's what we're doing every year. Our budgets have in it, we need this next year, and we're going to do that in every department, whether it's meters and water and sewer or other places. That's part of the budgets that we're putting, we're being presented with and approving every year. So I'm very thankful that we can do the premium, I think it's the right thing to do. I've had a number of people call me and tell me, please, oh my goodness, why wouldn't you do this? So I'm thankful that we're all supportive, and we'll move it forward the next week. Anything else you need from us on this?
No, that was just, we were just trying to get a consensus. Obviously, the Fox Building, I need to get that started as far as getting the architect going, so we can start working on the plans. Our goal is to reduce that number from 1.6 down as much as we can find. And the canopies, those are, they're going to come back as a change, I mean, I'll come back with them as a change, but I already have the COR from AMP, but we've got to get those ready to go, so that when we do start building that parking lot, all of the canopies go in and we don't disrupt that, you know, facility again. But when we're done with Phase Two, we are done. And that's just kind of what we wanted to get to.
Kind of feels good to get to a milestone. Nice work. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item five, which is council member's choice, who would like to start. And if you want to pass, you can.
I'll pass.
Councilmember Questa?
I'm going to pass as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Wink?
I'll pass.
Mayor Portman?
I'll pass.
Okay. Member Barantine?
We had the Inglewood Housing Authority meeting, and there is a request, again, I requested the contracts that made traditions, the Akoma lofts, the Delaware Project, the foundry tax-exempt, the contracts. The intention was to go ahead and have an agreement that they would take Section Eight. They have had more people port in, which is just that their home base would be the issuing was another municipality, and they are issuing more Section Eight, and they have no idea how many Section Eight vouchers are being housed in any of those locations. I asked them for that information, and for that board then to make a decision on whether or not they're getting the bang for the buck. It is the Housing Authority that provided $100 to these organizations, and in that partnership, us paying them or through the Housing Authority paying them, because they're a separate government entity, they then became tax-exempt, which means that the Housing Authority could undo that contract if they are not getting the bang for the taxpayer's buck, because there is no requirement for how many people need to be in, how many Section Eight they have to house. And HUD right now is not willing to make up the difference, because the rent that they do, bless you, the rent that they are requiring and the rent that they can afford, which is usually 30% of whatever their income is. So, and so far, these organizations that we've partnered with through the Inglewood Housing Authority have been unwilling to negotiate their rents to put them at a level where HUD would be willing to do that. Long story short, that means that the taxpayer is not providing for the poor and elderly in this community that they thought they were, and we are not getting the property taxes and use, I mean, that makes them tax-exempt. So we're going without our money, and they're not necessarily providing the service. So we're going to get those numbers next month, I hope, and see where we stand with that, whether this is really something we ought to continue to do or not. I'm not sure that the previous boards really kind of delved into it as much as maybe they should have. The other is that, who is the new assistant? Lindsey? Lindsey. She said that she is part of Change the Trend, and that they were doing some things, and so a request was also on exactly how the city is working with them and where their funding is coming from. And then a day, Jerry Graber, the director, went to a Rotary meeting, and a presentation was done on a day, and HUD does a census of sorts of homeless, and what the census of homeless for in that day, that period in time, for Arapahoe County was 198 people. Their definition of homeless is a lot different than what the feds do, and so we have to kind of come into alignment with which one we're going with when we're talking on some of those issues. At first, it seemed like Change the Trend was doing kind of a lot from Lindsey's perspective, and then it boiled down to is that they're only dealing with four people right now in some kind of what's a mentoring program. And then the issue also then arose on these mentoring programs, whether, we certainly wouldn't want to see a similar situation- wouldn't want to see a similar situation to the brothers on Washington Street or what Giving Heart was doing, which was allowing or encouraging, actually, people to go and taking a homeless person into their backyard, into their garage, into their shed. And we saw that there's, can certainly be some abuse with that, but we asked for a little bit more information about that as well because that's unfair to the neighbors around. It's also a violation of the law, and it's also somewhat inhumane to do that to a human being and stuff them in the shed. But they said they were gonna get a little bit more information and provide that to us at the next meeting. So that's my update on the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I did not.
What? No, you did not? Anything else?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Sierra.
No, so just, I guess just for me, on Thursday night, I'm gonna be at the Charles Hay, I always get this wrong, Annual Harvest Festival. So it's between five and seven. I just realized that's actually at the same time as the Parks and Rec Committee meeting, so I may need a substitute for that night, but I'll figure it out. But yeah, so I just wanted to point out where I will be on Thursday night since we don't want to run into an issue with too many people in one place, so, thank you.
Great. Thank you. I just have a few things. A couple of weeks ago, I was at Mike Fordyce's retirement party and, or their celebration, and I read the proclamation that we all agreed to. It was a really lovely evening. He was well honored. I think he had tears of both laughter and tears of joy of leaving the place that he's loved for a long time. It was a really sweet evening for him and his family. And then Manufacturers' Day was last Thursday. It was phenomenal. I just, the Community Development Office has done just a great job of helping the industrial part of our town, which is, you know, is 25% of our land is allowed for that. And it was 50, 60 people at this wonderful event. Had all of the demonstrations of different equipment there being created and different workers from industries that came together and talked about their kinds of industries and what they're doing. They're really building a community up in that area, so it was very fun. And then the last thing is, I was afraid everybody would show up at something. Last night Sacred Grace did do a kind of a going-away thing for Eric Heck and his family and invited, I think, a number of people, but it was a very quick and kind thing for them as well. So that's all I have. Everybody's, nobody wants to add in? You went somewhere Friday night?
I did go. I was thinking I would just wait until the council meeting next week, but I went to the 107th National Day of Taiwan. It was an amazing celebration, and they'd, I actually agreed to just make a few comments instead of read the proclamation because they had several, several people. And the Director General, Jerry Chang, is very gracious, and they are, that is probably one of the neatest celebrations that I've been to. I mean, when they opened it, they, they had some Taiwanese cadets from the Air Force Academy. They sang first the National Anthem for America and then the anthem for the Republic of China. And it just was very moving and very familiar. I hope that I get to do this more often than just once. It was a great celebration. So, thank you for allowing me to go.
Well, thank you for doing it. I had a national conference that was here in town. It's been planned for like eight months, and I had to be at that Friday evening, so I'm so glad that you could go because we've always had someone there, so it was great.
It was, and actually, the judge was there also.
Oh, yeah, I wondered.
And he knows a lot of people there, so.
Great. City Manager, Acting Deputy?
Whatever I am. I do have a few things. The most important is that we had brought to you in a previous study session the possibility that we would change our insurance carrier for property and liability. We've done more research on that, looking at all the details, and think that a decision on that would be premature at this point. There are lots of moving parts, and what I would suggest is that in the spring or, you know, late winter, that we bring this back to council and talk in more theoretical terms about the levels of coverage and all the different issues involved in this and get direction from council. And then when we get down to the very specifics of the actual premium costs and deductibles, which are given by the insurance companies in a very tight timeframe, that the larger policy decisions council would already have had an opportunity to discuss. So we're postponing that decision. Next year, staff may come back and say it's probably a good idea to change or not, but I think it would be important to give you that opportunity to look at all the issues. So we're not gonna bring that forward to a vote as we had said we might. Any questions or concerns? Thank you. The other thing, the Community Development Department brought to my attention this evening that we've had a request for a block party on Radcliffe, just off of Broadway, on Saturday as a celebration to raise money for the flood victims. I don't see any problem with that, but I just wanted to alert council that there may be some expenses involved with setting up traffic, you know, make sure that it's as safe as possible for the residents in that street and anyone attending. Because they said they might have a lot of motorcycles, which is fine. We just want to work with the police department to make sure that that is safe for everyone. It's a, it's a private party. It's not sponsored by the city, but just wanted you to be aware that we'll, we'll do all we can to accommodate that block party.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On that, is it, because that would just be for the small amount of time that they're there, right? I mean, there's some window of time. I had never been to a motorcycle run before this weekend, and there was one for the young man who died on the motorcycle's wife is pregnant. And so there were just kind of like a lot of motorcycles, and then they stay there for a short period of time and leave. Is that, so what period of time are they looking for?
I don't know entirely. They just said they wanted to close the street from noon till midnight.
Just Radcliffe?
Right. Just Radcliffe.
And just one block, right?
Right, right. So, give that.
All right.
The, the third item is that, in my short tenure here, I have, I think it would be very useful for staff and for council if all the requests that come in from council members, be it email or phone or in person at the meetings, be recorded as council requests, sent out, all the answers to all of council. I just wanted you to make, to be clear that, you know, we'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll do our best to answer your questions as immediately as possible. But I'm, I'm kind of seeing that we're not really capturing all the council requests that come through, and I want to say that we're gonna try and do a better job of sharing that information.
Can I ask a question with that? So are we still gonna be keeping track of the council requests?
Oh, yes.
More helpful?
Oh, yes. Okay. I think so. If, if that format is good, good for council.
Yes, that's...
That's why she's gonna do it, because I think some of us have maybe asked questions and haven't said to Manager Heck, make this a council request, and then sometimes he did or didn't. And I really think everything we ask that you get information for, we all should know so that we don't either repeat or we get more information that helps us on something else. I appreciate that you're doing this.
Yes.
And, and that also means then we don't have to include each other on every single thing that comes in, which opens us up to Cora, or not Cora, but just open meetings, violations that are not really helpful. So you can email her directly and say, like I just did on something, and said, please make us a council request. So everyone hears about it then the next week and sees a response. And it might take a couple of weeks sometimes for them to find out...
Sure.
...some of the things, but I really appreciate you're doing it like that.
Well, we'll try and do that.
Is there, I mean, to, for clarification from what she's saying is, because if there's some issue that comes up, like the one about personnel, in one email, we're given something from the city manager that said, I'm not gonna tell you about a personnel change that I thought was pretty significant because we don't discuss that. I'm not gonna do it in email, and I'm not gonna do it in open record. And then all of a sudden, I get something that says, oh, we're gonna do something publicly that would acknowledge that there was a health issue and, and that there's some kind of, and what the employment status was. So I think those things, when we're asking for clarification, should certainly go to all of council at the same time that the question's being asked.
Oh, sure.
Okay. And then, okay, so, and I think the list helps at least. What is the timeframe for, I was just looking at some of the lists. Is, are you gonna include like the timeframe for response?
Yeah.
Because I saw some things, I go, huh, that looks like it's fairly straightforward. You know, why they weren't marked, so you're just gonna go through and see if they've been resolved? Okay.
I think there's, there's been some misunderstanding about it, so we want to make sure that everyone's getting all the information as quickly as possible.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's all I have.
I forgot one thing, and that's this little thing that's on your table in front of you, this little 74. I did drop a, drop the discussion about taking a stand on anything, but I did want to give this to you. CML sent a bunch to us. I don't know if you all got these in a little packet, but I got a whole bunch of them, so if you want more, this is, this is there. I also have a lot of other information on any of these. I'll forward them through to you that has just come in the last day even. So I encourage you all to be thinking about this and helping your residents understand different perspectives on it. I particularly want to say that this is probably the most threatening thing to municipal home rule and decision-making, so. City Attorney?
I attended the CML City Attorneys Conference last Friday and Saturday morning, and it was really probably the best conference I've been to in quite a few years. A lot of information came out. Very litigious year, about 50 cases came out of the United States Supreme Court and the Colorado Supreme Court impacting municipalities. So lots of new information that we were brought up to speed on. As some of this becomes applicable, I'll share it with you. I keep thinking I want to give you one more report, but I think you are overwhelmed with the amount of paper, so I'm just breaking it down, and when the topics come up as applicable, I'll just send you the pieces of that that I picked up. But it was a great conference, and I was pleased that we participated.
Are you able to do them just as a topic?
Probably. You and I can...
My only asking for that is, is if we just had them by topic, that maybe you wouldn't see something that might affect that, but if we hear something in the community and we go, uh-oh, she said there was some change on signs, maybe I should, or sign laws, like yard signs, I'll go look at that because that became a big issue. And then go, wait, this person talking to me, maybe they do have a point that they've brought up that, oh, no, the court changed that, and at least we'd know to go to you then and say, you've listed that as one of the things that have changed. So maybe not the whole report on all 50 or six, whatever it is, but at least just like a bullet, just a, just a topic, maybe, just so that we at least know that it's possible.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I can send that out tonight, just a list of cases, and they are pretty short, but it, the entire conference has information that I really want to get to you, but get to you at a time when you're ready to process it. So I'll send the cases out because honestly, I've already broken those down and sent them out to departments, and I'm dying to share that information with anybody else who's interested.
As little as possible.
All gonna be law nerds. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
Then our study session is adjourned, and we're gonna reconvene in the chambers in order to initiate the special session. All right? Do we need a quick break, or can we go straight in?
Let's go.
All right. I hope I have...
Yeah. We have to...
We're not doing the executive session. We're just...
Yeah, we, yeah, so we're gonna go in there to, so we can vote really legitimately with our little buttons, and then we'll come back in here for, if we...
I'm here, Dan, so we can leave our things.
I will.
We can ask our list here to be here.
I think my husband probably will be, too. Dan?
Yeah.
Are you sticking around so people can leave their stuff?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, Sam. Oh, let's see, I guess maybe I should take something to write on in case I need to write.
So I don't need, so, sure.
Yeah, no, no, you guys are now.
Yes.
I thought you were...
Yeah, you should probably force you.
Yeah.
I think you...
I rolled into his job a little bit.
Oh, hopefully it works.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it works.
Yeah.
And he, he has, what'd you say?
He, he got...
Overseeing.
That's right.
I never knew there was a room back there.
This secret room.
Does the mic work?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Sierra, call this meeting to order for City Council's special meeting Monday, October 8th, 2018. Would the clerk please take roll call?